To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to welcome everyone here to the chamber, and we will have a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council with the Successor Agency, Housing Authority, Parking Authority, Public Financing Authority, and the Youth Endowment Service Funds Board on Tuesday, February 25, 2025. I would like to let everyone know that the mayor is currently in Washington, D.C., attending the American Public Power Association Legislative Rally. She serves on the APPA Policymaker Council, and the legislative rally is a great opportunity for the mayor to speak with the lawmakers and advocate on behalf of the city of Burbank. Additionally, the vice mayor is not able to join us, as you can see. They're not here tonight. Is not able to join us tonight, so I'll be residing officer for this meeting tonight. So with that, we will have a moment of reflection. Please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsible for the betterment of Burbank. With that, let's take a moment and do our reflection. With that, would you please stand for the flag salute?
... the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hello, Madam City Clerk. How are you?
I am terrific. How are you? Councilmember Mullins?
Great. Would you take a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Anthony?
Here.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rizotti?
I am here.
And noting the absence of Vice Mayor Tagahashi and Mayor Perez. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be five periods of public comments tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period, and must submit cards for call before the general public comment period begins. The first public comment period is for the general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or agenda item. If you are here in person and wish to speak during the public comment period, you should have submitted a yellow, and Councilmember Rizotti has it, a yellow public comment card to address council. If you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335, 238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. If you would like to participate in public comment for the public hearing over the phone, please call any time between now and the beginning of the public hearing, at again, Callers will be placed in a queue until the public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional public comment periods will be available following the reports to council this evening. We have our two staff members there assisting in any, in case you need interpreters, they're available for your assistance, and please let them know if you walk up to them, they're available to assist you in Spanish and Armenian. And they're sitting right there in the front. If we do not have a need for them, we will let them go after the public comment period begins. So tonight, we have seven announcements this evening, and I believe they will start any second now.
Following our announcements for February 25, 2025. This May, the City of Burbank Parks and Recreation Department celebrates Older Americans Month by honoring exceptional volunteers. We are looking for individuals aged 60 or older who live in Burbank and have significantly contributed to the community. Nominees should embody our theme, flip the script on aging, and have not previously won this award. All nominations must be submitted by Friday, February 28. Visit burbankca.gov/adults55 to submit your nomination. Starting in March 2025, drivers will pay to park for street parking along San Fernando Boulevard between Magnolia Boulevard and Angelino Avenue, as well as the side streets on either side of San Fernando between First Street and Third Street. The hourly parking fee will be set to ensure that drivers will have at least one or two parking spaces available on each block at any time, making it easier to find a parking spot. The parking fee will be set at $2 per hour and will be charged between 8:00 a.m. and midnight every day. All parking revenue will be reinvested back into downtown Burbank to help maintain the public parking structures and lots. For more information, please visit parking.burbankca.gov or call 818-238-5290. Join us at the 2025 Summer Camps and Recreation Fair at George Isaiah Park on Saturday, March 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Meet our friendly camp and recreation instructors, enjoy fun games, and win fantastic prizes. This event is free for all. Register at burbankparks.com to secure your spot. Pre-registration for summer days is now open. By pre-registering, you can complete all necessary forms in advance, ensuring a smooth and swift registration process later. Resident registration opens on March 8 and 9 a.m., followed by open registration starting on March 18. For more details, visit burbankca.gov/camps. Secure your spot early and make this summer unforgettable. The city's Transportation Division is launching a study to evaluate and update its current Burbank bus services to better serve current and future riders. Potential changes include revised routes, updated schedules, added stops, and improved connections to other transit services. Your input is essential in shaping these improvements. Visit the city's website for more information and to complete the survey. The Community Development Department invites you to a community workshop for Safer Streets Burbank at the Buena Vista Library on March 12 from 5 to 7 p.m. This workshop will provide an update on development of the Safer Streets Burbank Action Plan, which focuses on streamlining the implementation of the Complete Streets Plan and addressing immediate roadway safety concerns with quick-build projects. For more information, please visit the city's website. Attention California homeowners! Applications are open for the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program. Receive up to $3,000 in grant funding for a seismic retrofit of your home to reduce the risk of earthquake damage. Qualifying homes must apply by March 26. Visit earthquakebracebolt.com to learn more. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you. And with tonight, I hate wearing glasses, so I have to put them on and off, forgive me. With tonight, it's an honor for me to present a proclamation, and if I can ask Shawna Christian to come up here from Tanzi. Thank you, Shawna. So if you haven't been to Tanzi, I just want to quickly, it's a beautiful, serene place that you can go, relax, have a cup of coffee, enjoy the beautiful plants, and really, it's a place where you, total relaxation. So I just wanted to, you know, give you a shout out to your place. It is really beautiful. So with that, it's an honor for me to give you this proclamation for Black History Month. You are part of our community, and so you were chosen to receive this proclamation tonight. So with that, I will read it. Let me put these babies on. Okay. "In 1915, distinguished Black historian Arthur Carter Woodson founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life in History (ASALH) to research and promote achievement for Black Americans. And in 1926, ASALH sponsored the prosecution of Black History Month, inspiring school and communities nationwide to organize local celebration history club and lecture celebrating the contribution of Black Americans in their central role of U.S. history. And President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month in 1976, calling upon Americans to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And every U.S. president since has officially designated February as Black History Month. And during Black History Month, the City of Burbank celebrates the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, culture, and social, and political development. And observe a Black History Month also calls our attention to the continued need of champion democratic ideals and work in progress as equity and justice-oriented organization actively and enthusiastically engages on issues of racism and prejudice. And in December of 2020, the Burbank City Council unanimously passed a resolution acknowledging the prevalence of sundown practice in Burbank, passed and achieving the city commitment to racial equity, which is now signed and proudly displayed in our city hall." I didn't know if you knew this or not. It's downstairs. Okay, good. "The City of Burbank proudly honors and is grateful for the contribution of Black Americans to our community and recognize their hard work, one progress in the history of our nation. And the City of Burbank, built fundamental of people, pride, and progress, strives to be inclusive community, which is all citizens' respect and recognize for their contribution to the city, the state, the county, and the world. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor, and the council, the City of Burbank do hereby proclaim February 1st, 28, 2025, through the 28, 2025, Black History Month in the City of Burbank. I encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage, culture, and continue our efforts to create community that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all." Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to give you the mic to say a few words. Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to the people, the council people and the people of Burbank. We've been here almost six years, and the community put their arms around us from the minute we showed up, so it's been a wonderful experience. Using this vehicle, I would like to express the fact that I am only one of three Black business owners in Burbank. And so if at all, there is a chance of, you know, anything being passed to help bring more business here, whether it's Black, White, Hispanic, it doesn't really matter, I would be behind it and would love to help out if need be. But again, thank you so much for all of this. And little note, any of you know, we do have a new terminal being built for the Burbank Hollywood Airport, and we got picked as the gift shop inside the airport, so very excited. So Tanzi will be representing all of Burbank to everybody flying into Hollywood, Burbank Hollywood Airport, so really excited about that. But again, thank you so much, you guys. I really appreciate it. Congratulations. Yes, it's all yours, and I think they want to do a quick photo. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, you guys. I really appreciate it. Did you do that?
No, I did not. It's on.
Just checking. I just walked away for a minute. Okay, Mr. City Manager, could you please give us a report? Do we have a report for tonight?
Madam Chair, good evening. I do not have anything for tonight, but I appreciate the ask.
It's my pleasure to always ask you. Now I move on to Mr. City Attorney. Can you please give us a report on the closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, City Council members, for the benefit of the public, the city council met this afternoon at 4:00 p.m. to discuss four items in closed session. There were three matters of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in the matter of Gutierrez versus City of Burbank, which is our California Voting Rights Act case, Beatrix Lainez versus City of Burbank, which is a personal injury case, Evangelina Vasquez versus City of Burbank, a personal injury case, and finally, City Council met with the city's labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Ms. Betsy McClinton, Management Services Director, to discuss negotiations with the Burbank City Employees Association. The city council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And with that, tonight, we have the general public comment. Now is the time for general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak. In order to keep the public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have designated the seat in the front row, right there is this public comment. You may take a seat there, and that will means you're up next after the first speaker. Time is available on the podium. This also is the last call for anyone who needs to be, to use our interpreters there. Are you, anybody asked you? No? Okay. Or those for staff to be released this evening. And I think we'll give one more minute, and if you are not being asked, then you guys can go home. Thank you so much for your service. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agenda report but will not be able to speak on that item following the segment. Please state your name for the record when you come up to the podium. And with that, we have, I think, is this it? Yes, we have nine public comment cards. Okay, thank you. We have nine cards, and therefore you each get three minutes, since we only have nine cards.
Well, there's no callers?
We don't have anybody on the phone? Okay, we're good. We're safe. Thank you. Okay, our first speaker is Bob Derigo? Paul, I'm sorry, that's not Bob, Paul.
I wasn't the first, but I wasn't, I wasn't the first person, but...
I have you...
The gentleman was ahead of me.
Okay, is his name, is your name Keith?
Yeah, Keith.
Okay, well, I have Paul and then Keith.
Whatever you want to do, it's fine with me.
However you decide, I'm going to leave.
You okay?
So you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first.
Whoever wants to go first.
That's okay with him, sure.
Okay.
Hi, yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Derigo with Citizens for Humane, Los Angeles. Last time we were here, I just wanted to point out, I read the charter, and I just would like, I think we should need that little clarification on break of decorum. It's kind of vague and ambiguous about how we address it when we're here. I just ask that we kind of look at that. We also talked about the alley. I've been talking about this for a year and a half. The alley team is light on staff, meaning like they don't have enough people to do it. I know I spoke with you, Konstantin, about it. So what we need to do is, maybe we can, like, we talked about this before, hopefully we can enroll you guys on this, we can get volunteers, look at the insurance, see if we can get people to do this work, that they're covered under our insurance policy. They can go out on weekends, there's plenty of people, I'm sure we can rally up on weekends to help the team clean the alleys. There's plenty of debris, and you could just ask the team that they're really behind. Somebody was here last week in their last meeting, they talked about it. On a lighter note, you know, the moon, there's a mirror on the moon, and every year they measure it with a laser beam, and the moon is moving away from the earth one inch every year. The sand is, the dust is covering that mirror, so eventually they're going to have to go up there and clean it, right? The second thing that just came out was the molten center of the earth is starting to cool. So what does this mean, really? Well, it means that some things that we can't do anything about. Okay, but there are some things that we can do, and that's manage our trash. There's a marine group that goes out and saves seals and animals from fishing nets. These animals get these nets wrapped around their neck or fishing hooks stuck in their mouth, and you can watch these YouTube videos, and this is us and how we manage our oceans. Again, it has nothing really to do with Burbank, I'm just kind of sharing with you some things that we can do locally. When I go to the dumps, I can see how our trash is piled up, and where we go with our trash is our responsibility. Knowing what we do with our trash is our responsibility. So it's something for us to consider when we look at what we can do, what we can't do, focus on Burbank issues, like simply like, can we get these alleys clean? What can we focus on is important? Can we get volunteers, you know, the insurance, can we get the insurance addendum, you know, change that we can get people? And if we really look at, like, the environment, can we do something about it or not, and can we adapt? So that's all I really wanted to share with you tonight, and I'm looking forward to keep coming and contributing to our city. I'm really happy to see the woman who just won that award for her restaurant. It's tough to have a restaurant business, and if we can get the tax rate down here, we still 10 and 1/4? That can also drive business here as well, people pay less in taxes, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Zelnicker, followed by Ron Backs.
Hi, I'm Keith Zelnicker. I own a small business called It's Nuts. I've participated at the downtown Burbank Market every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the past two years. I used to, in the past, without incident, be able to park with my flashers on to load and then reload, load my car at the market start time, and then reload my car at the end of the market. My loading time is about one to two minutes. It's just four folding tables, five bins, a tabletop roaster, and a small canopy. Currently, an inspector has come by and is now requiring me to enter this queue. There's two pictures. One is a queue of cars that line up at the Ross Alleyway, and then, it takes about 20 minutes from lining up, and then one of the market managers needs to warn pedestrians, and I drive behind them, and I drive slowly. And then after 20 minutes, I wind up to where I finally would be, like, prior to making me join that queue, because I don't set up at the AMC Walkway, I set up where I face San Fernando Boulevard, basically right next to the Gap Store. I put in a black arrow that shows where I set up my booth, and then I circle where this yellow painted area is. Now, that yellow area is not technically a loading zone, loading is not allowed, but also cars are not normally allowed to drive down the AMC Walkway either, but we make some concessions just so vendors could set up and take down. By requiring me to get in this 20-minute queue, it's 20 minutes start, 20 minutes at the end of the market, this is 120 minutes added to my workday of just sitting in my car and waiting each weekend, and for the 20 minutes where I can't just offload, but I'm sitting in my car, that's before the market start time, that's one hour when you combine Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I tend to average about $100 an hour in sales, so by enforcing this, you're costing me about $100 of lost sales each week and about $5,000 of lost sales each year. Also, it's taking 20 minutes, and then I pull up right to San Fernando Boulevard, and then my car is blocking the cars that are, that do set up at the AMC Walkway. Now I'm blocking them as I'm offloading my car, so I'm also delaying, 30 of the 34 vendors are in that AMC Walkway, so then my car is blocking them, and so I'm also now blocking my fellow vendors from being able to exit, park their cars, and set up their canopies. So it's costing me $5,000 a year, but it's actually costing all the vendors more.
Thank you. That's your time, and we can't answer you now, but if you want to stick around, I'm sure we'll have some staff that would can assist.
Cool.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Backs, followed by Mark Skrock.
Good evening, Council. Ron Backs, seatbelts?
I have mine on. Go for it.
Episode 5 will have to wait. I feel compelled to address the misinformation, potential disinformation, and distractions presented at the last city council meeting. Misinformation in that I was misquoted, potential disinformation because it's difficult to disprove all questionable assertions, even I cannot rule out future events, though they may be outlandish and skewing, my purposely exaggerated use of a bullhorn as an example to demonstrate how extreme things could be taken as if I was specifically referring to the BTU. Even a council member referred to my use of a bullhorn in what I took as a dismissal of my statements. Last meeting, I was quoted as in favor of a rent registry encompassing all rental units within Burbank. I did not say that. However, I am now in favor of such a registry with tenants supplying the information and paying any fee, and any and all fees associated, as long as misinformation is treated the same as a false police report. It is customary in our society that a person, or persons, or entity benefits benefiting from a program contributes to its implementation. This would eliminate... This would eliminate the difficulty expanding the city business license database currently for properties three or more rental units to include single-family, duplexes, condominiums, any other property type I have failed to list. I'm totally in favor of an ordinance that requires me to inform tenants of the registry's existence. Currently, I'm required by federal, state, and laws to notify tenants of lead paint, asbestos, mold, bedbugs, the sex offender database, my contact information, the possibility of me producing a derogatory credit report, if the property is in a flood zone, their AB 1482 rights and recycling. I also, as a courtesy, include information about where to obtain water and power service, solid waste and sewer system are included as we know with Burbank, gas service, telephone, cable, internet, and newspaper. Worst case, I see it as an additional appendix to the rental agreement. In closing, I try to give the facts and possible logical outcomes due to my 29 years' experience preparing failure modes and effects analysis, FMEAs, and even a failure mode and critical like, criticality analysis, a FEMICA. One of those was enough and designing control systems to mitigate them. Got to get my timing down there, that didn't come out right. It is disturbing to see city council, council members appear to accept pure conjecture. In conclusion, I implore you to take into account the facts and data I and other housing providers have provided, consider the logical possible effects. We have postulated and contemplate the prospect of unintended consequences when you deliberate taking possible actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by Dwayne Gilmore.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Scroggs. As you know, I've been talking about brainstorming sessions for the entertainment industry. I started hosting them on Zoom last week. So far, like, the previews of them have been really good. They're online, I can share them with you. It's talking about what we can do to help the entertainment industry. We're getting groups of like, five to eight people to discuss things and it's been a very open, open forum, it's been great. I think we can make some changes, maybe not the big changes, but some of the middle changes if we just identify the problems and the situations. So here's some topics that we discussed. Why is it more cost-effective for a series to buy a plane to fly cast and crew back and forth from Portland than filming here? How come senior animators and casting directors in particular, because they were brought up, have to take entry-level jobs just to make their insurance and keep their jobs? How to inspire and train the next generation? There's a lot of mentoring that's not gonna happen when the senior people are just holding on to themselves and everybody else is gonna move away or start doing productions elsewhere. And promoting, the importance of promoting why we should film here, you know, the tax incentive part of it, like, how much is spent? Like, why we, people moved here, why people want to work here? A promotion campaign which a couple of us are working on. And how to bring down costs to make it easier. Permits are ridiculous. Other cities and markets, I mentioned this to the vice mayor yesterday, have mentors or liaisons that walk someone through the whole process. We don't. Why should it cost $1,000 to film in your own backyard for, in, and, you know, when you're shooting here? It just doesn't make sense. And that's why a lot of them, people say, we're known as Don't Film LA. Not saying just Burbank, but Don't Film LA by many. So that's some of the stuff. Like I said, you can read the summary so far on my Substack, because I'm on Substack, at Mark R. Scroggs, just doing one, and I got the videos too. I'm welcoming people to join us. It's been mostly casting and agents and clients and managers so far, but it's open to anybody else who wants to join. We're doing a few a week on Zoom, we're probably gonna start doing some in-person soon, but they've been really, really eye-opening. So, like I said, I will share more information, I'm gonna share the playbook with what I have with other communities once we get going, so they can get going too. And this could also be used for restaurants, and I know like the city of Altadena yesterday was talking how they're using small groups to help rebuild their community. So it's a great idea, because I thought of it, and with council member Mullins, and, but I think it's something we can do, because we can't deal with some of the major, we can't deal with the economy, we can't deal with air and water, but we can deal with this other stuff. So, that's my time, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we move on, there seems to be some knocking, are we handling that or?
It's being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was you kicking the chair under there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilmore, go ahead. And now, just followed by Eric Hock.
Great. Members of Burbank City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm presenting myself as a candidate for the Infrastructure Oversight Board. My name's Dwayne Gilmore. I've called Burbank home proudly for the past seven years. During this time, I've built a home for my family and a community that I really cherish. Professionally, my experience is deeply aligned with the mission and qualifications called for by the Infrastructure Oversight Board. The past 25 years, my job title has consistently included the word "infrastructure." Today, I lead an infrastructure advisory firm offering strategic guidance on capital projects across both private, private and public sectors in California and around the world. My business is a small business and it's certified by LA Metro as a minority-owned enterprise. And again, I'm based right here in Burbank. In terms of qualifications, I'm a licensed civil engineer, I have an MBA, and I also have a master's degree in interdisciplinary design. I have a deep technical skill in civil and infrastructure elements and I have experience and training in managing, operating, and capital budgets for infrastructure projects and programs. Prior to starting my own business, for example, I was an infrastructure development executive at Google. I'm also fluent in interfacing with urban planners, architects, utility companies, public officials, community members, and, and many other stakeholders as well. I'm really keenly aware of the challenges and opportunities about Burbank faces in maintaining and upgrading infrastructure, be it roads, how people move around Burbank, parking and other infrastructure needs. That supports this growing environment economy. I believe that the economic and environmental sustainability must be at the heart of our decisions. My experience has taught me that it's essential for a community's quality of life, economic vitality, and resilience to, to really represent infrastructure needs, and we've seen that in, in very recent events in, in LA. I've attended the Infrastructure Oversight Board meetings and I've spoken to key members of Public Works and other collaborators. I'm confident that my technical experience combined with years of hands-on project experience provides a strong foundation to serve Burbank efficiently. In closing, I want to share something personal. In 2023, I applied for a seat on the Infrastructure Oversight Board. The final question on that application asked me if I was registered to vote. It was a requirement and I had to answer no. At the time, I wasn't a US citizen, but that very moment inspired me to become a US citizen, so I became a US citizen last year. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, thank you for considering my application and I look forward to serving Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Right now, we have Eric Hock, and followed by Joe Pimienta.
All right. Hey, hey to the members of the Burbank City Council, the terrific city staff, and others who've taken time out of their evening to participate in this, this meeting. My name for the record is Eric Hock, I am the current president of the Board of Directors for the Burbank Community Band. As a number of you may already know, the Burbank Community Band had a very wonderful end of 2024 calendar year with a really special December holiday show on Saturday, December the 21st. A lot of great factors came together to make this December holiday concert a wonderful success. Of course, knowing we have the support of this body through the first-ever Burbank Arts Grant really helped produce a great show. In the end, the band was applauded by a packed and enthusiastic house at First Christian Church for this December holiday show, and we hope that this is cementing itself as a city musical tradition here. I do want to emphasize thanks for authorizing funds for the first-ever Burbank Arts Grant. For our band, in retrospect, there were two things that really meant a great deal for us. One was, we knew we, we weren't alone, that we had the support of the city council, of the Cultural Arts Commission, of the team at the, at Parks and Rec, as well as the city supporting us and wanting us to succeed. And in recent years, with costs increasing, our performances have become sometimes more labors of love than labors of financial success. So the support from the grant allowed us to know we had some funds awarded to support this endeavor and behind-the-scenes anxiety was able to be replaced with, with sort of a, an opportunity to be more imaginative in our marketing efforts of going to local shops and stores and, and putting our flyers in windows where they'd let us or by sales cashier registers. And this was just a very cool thing and that allowed us to have a packed house there. This leads me to another expression of gratitude, as just over a week ago, the Burbank Community Band was awarded funds from the second and most recent Burbank Arts Grant, and the band will use this award for our next and biggest show of the 2024-2025 season. I'll mention that in a moment, but thanks to this council and the city for supporting local artist groups here in Burbank and making funds available for these groups through the Burbank, like the Burbank Community Band, through the Burbank Arts Grant. We are extremely grateful for this incredible support. And finally, in 25 seconds, I mentioned a moment ago, and I'll do just a brief teaser, but the band is looking ahead to our 85th anniversary show, or 1940 to 2025. This will be on Saturday, April 12th at 2:00 PM at Burbank High School, so put that in your phones. And I'll speak more about it next month there, for sure. But April 12th at Burbank High School at 2:00. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Joe Pimienta, followed by Eddie Pallone.
Good evening, council members, staff, and everybody present in the chamber. Not surprisingly, I would like to talk about how can rent caps actually save communities? Now, before that, I do want to just address a few facts that have been stated on this podium and then follow them up with like, with a bit of a personal opinion as to why it supports my point. It has been stated here that living on social security is, it's not enough to live on, and that is correct. So I think it's important to focus on all the people that are current, that that is their only means of income and what a rent increase can do to their, what a rent increase can do to their lifestyle. It has also been stated that retirement is not enough to live on, and that is also correct. So let's think of all the tenants that have had to retire either early due to medical circumstances, different family situations, or simply due to age. Rent increases can actually be a huge detriment to that. As we all know, maintenance, insurance, all these, all these things keep rising. So I would like for you to think of, to take into consideration the tenants who live under buildings that are already not being maintained and live under deplorable conditions, but actually have to make the decision of whether to report those conditions in, in light of maybe facing rent increases or, you know, or having to be able to figure out if they can get by with whatever income they actually have at the moment. Because if they were to have a rent increase, that means that they have to make a decision between paying what, paying the roof over their head or making sure that they have enough medication or food on the table. So, as I've been saying many times before, we all agree on what the problem with, with this situation is, which is an exponential rise, you know, an exponential rise of, you know, an exponential rising cost of living and how that produces anxiety. So, the thing, the biggest disagreement that we have though is what that, is what the vantage point is on this conversation. So the way that I kind of look at it is that this is not, this is not a conversation about two sides. This is a conversation about who gets to survive financial distress and it's a conversation about who gets to stay in their community they call home. So, I would just like to implement one, I would just like to state one more, once more time, that when there is a rent cap, there is a stronger possibility and there's a, there's a longer sense for people to be able to remain in their communities and to continue their, you know, their good quality of life. Thank you for your time and enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Now we have Eddie Pallone, followed by my last card, Kevin Morris.
Good evening, council members, my name is Eddie Pallone, I'm a Burbank resident. I have three asks for council tonight to consider. The first is, there's $75 million in funding for Measure M that Burbank is eligible for, it's our taxpayer money. A bunch of this money is actually earmarked for first-last-mile transit improvements and our staff is currently looking into this. And it's my first ask tonight is to ask, is council to ask staff to change their posture from looking into to aggressively pursuing these funds for our city. These, this could be our chance to extend the Chandler Bike Way and connect it to the Channel Bike Way, as well as build other much-needed pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. This is an urgent issue as the funding application deadline for MAT Cycle II closes April 7th. My second ask, two weeks ago, I sent an email to our Community Services Director asking to meet, to get his advice and perspective on community safety, livability, and economic issues that our Strong Towns Burbank group has been discussing. I did not receive a response to this. Several days later, I sent a follow-up email trying to get a meeting and that also did not respond for that. After a week, last week, I called the Community Development Director to try to connect via the phone and I was, got the voicemail of his assistant and I'm still asking, I'm still waiting for a response. So I would ask council if they could help a Burbank resident, a city commissioner, a president of our local transportation advocacy group, and a graduate student in urban planning at CSUN, if you guys could help me get a meeting with our development director. Our third director, a third, my third, third ask is the Olive Avenue Bridge. Assemblymember Nick Schules has introduced AB 939, which is a $20 billion state bond to fund replacement of vital aging and dangerous transportation infrastructure such as the Olive Avenue Bridge. I urge council to support this bond with a comment letter. Now is the time to do that and get behind our representative who's trying to bring money to our community. Okay, there's a fourth ask. I would also ask council direct staff to report back to council on the status of plans to replace the dangerous and out-of-date Olive Avenue Bridge, which is really a viaduct. But the council advocated money this past year to begin the process and would all like to know what progress has been made and what the plans are to involve the community in the visioning stage of this vital project. Okay, no more asks, my, my final 30 seconds, I want to plant a seed. Burbank Ciclovia, this would be an amazing open street event that would have a huge positive impact in our community. To kick off this effort, Walkbike Burbank is planning a bike rally on Sunday, April 6th that we're gonna ride from Burbank to the NoHo Metro Station, we're gonna put our bikes on the metro and go down to K-Town to participate in the Ciclovia in K-Town. So please, everyone who's listening at home or in, in here, please stay tuned for further details, that's April 6th. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Now we have Kevin Morris.
Good evening, council members, my name is Kevin Morris. I'm very proud of our city giving the recipient the award for Black History Month. I didn't get the chance to ask her about the name of the business or what type of business it is. So if you guys have time later, can you highlight what type of business it is? Because I've never heard of it and I would like to support it. And so giving that spotlight, I think, would be very worthwhile for her award. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, just to confirm one more time, do we have any callers on the line? We don't. Okay, thank you. Now I declare the public comment period closed and I'm gonna turn to the city manager, city attorney, or staff to see if they have any comments.
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you, I could start, just a couple comments. As far as the vendor related to the downtown cultural market, we, I, I'm informed that we did reach out to him earlier today. However, we'll circle back, we'll also circle back with the, it's not our event, but we will circle back to the organizers to see what, what that queuing is and see if we could figure out a better strategy there. So I'm not sure what's exactly happening, so this is kind of a new thing and, but we could circle back on that. And then I do want to, if there was a, if we haven't already done a support letter for the Olive Bridge, we could certainly look at doing that, we might have already done that, but we could circle back on that. And then I know our Community Development Department wanted to elaborate a little bit more about that.
Good evening, council members, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. Few things. We, the transportation team is meeting with Metro to see if our San Fernando Boulevard Phase Two project ranks how it ranks in their active transportation planning grants for Measure M, so that's underway. Regarding Olive Bridge, the transportation team are about to execute a task order with a firm from our bench of consultants to begin the conceptual study. Timeline for that is about nine months, it's a long-term project. We got a response and we're negotiating with that firm. The other issue is, I am the Community Development Director and I just searched my email and I do not have a record, so I will give the gentleman my business card and happy to meet to discuss and, as we always are. I'm not difficult to get ahold of, I promise, so.
I know you're always available, but the card would help. Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any feedback?
Madam Chair, I would just clarify for Mr. Derigo. In addition to the charter- Madam Chair, I would just clarify for Mr. Derigo. In addition to the charter and the municipal code, actually, there aren't, uh, specific procedures in the municipal code. Council most recently updated its meeting procedure rules with adoption of Resolution Number 2429551, which was adopted on September 10th, 2024.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask the city manager, uh, I, for an update on the report that's supposed to come back to us regarding the media, um, and the filming process. I know Mr. Scroggs mentioned it and I know you have a date somewhere.
Yeah, uh, we're kind of excited. Um, so, uh, it's, uh, March 25th. Uh, so, uh, we're going to come back. We're going to talk about things like, uh, um, a local film commission as well as potential task force. So I know this is something the mayor has really wanted and pushed and, and, uh, we've taken a little bit of time, but we've been working with our, our partners, including the chambers. So, uh, we're looking, uh, currently, uh, March 20th, uh, next month, March 25th.
Thank you. Now I turn to my colleagues.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just real quick, I know, I think we have sent some comment letters about the Olive Street Bridge. I think there was a request specifically for AB 939. So as a support letter, that would have to be as an agenda item separately, yeah?
Uh, if, no, if it's part of the legislative platform, we, we, um, there is concurrent, uh, you know, consensus among the council. So we'll send it out, uh, on either with the mayor, mayor's signature, or sometimes if we want to elevate it, we'll, we'll end up having all, all five of you sign it. But, uh, typically we have to be quick and nimble about things like that. So we, we'll have the mayor sign it and usually we attach our, uh, they know our legislative platform is supporting that.
Okay, great. And then, um, I know Ciclavia is a big thing that happens around the county. Um, just procedurally, if, if a city wanted to do a Ciclavia, where would, where would someone from the community start with that? And, and would they reach out to transportation? Would they reach out to the Community Development Director? It's kind of a big thing. It is an expensive thing.
During, during, uh, the meeting that will be set up in the short future, uh, we, we could get a response.
All right, we'll put a pin in that for now.
It's probably something akin to a parade permit because you, you have to protect the participants in the same way that you protect both the parade participants and the onlookers.
Okay, and we have clear, um, delineation in our municipal code on parade permits and all of that stuff that can be easily looked up, yeah?
Hello again, council members. Uh, in the past, we received a grant to do a Ciclavia event, uh, that did not even come close to covering the costs. It was just kind of shelved it. Uh, we're open to the idea. It's a, it's a significant undertaking, but not impossible. Uh, and we're happy to chat with members of the community who would like to talk about it. Yeah. Uh, my, the CDD Transportation Team can facilitate the conversation.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Eric Hawke for coming and, and, uh, giving us an, an update on your band, the community band. And it's always nice to hear that, uh, the grant was able to help you out. Um, I had a question regarding our alleys. How often do we clean our alleys or do we clean our alleys? What's our response on that?
Yeah, Councilmember Ken Berkman, Public Works Director, thanks for the question. Um, the alleys are swept, it's, uh, per the stormwater regulations, basically like once a week. And our crews are, there's, there's 50 miles of alleys, there's 366 miles of sidewalks, there's 230 miles of streets and all of the same crews that are taking care of those and maintaining them. Anytime someone sees, um, anything out there, they can call 818-238-3800. They can report things through the 311 app, even with a photo. And it's always a regular main, uh, regular maintenance of all those facilities. But the hotspots, as we call them, if there are alleys, then, then we always hit those when we can.
And if a community member, member wanted to organize a task force to clean up the alleys, would you need, could they do that, just like the parks and, and the river? And could they do that on their own?
I would defer to the city attorney, but there would be legal requirements set for people that work in the right of way. So we don't have responsibility for things that they do or don't do.
Mr. City Attorney?
This is approaching a future agenda item. Um, but, um, normally when people want to do stuff in the right of way, they have to apply for a permit and provide us insurance. The city does not cover them, so.
If I could, i-if we could get you a memo back on that and, and, uh, let's try to figure out what we can do potentially. And if you don't like that, then you could ask for a, a first step.
I think it's pretty, I don't think we need a memo. I think it's pretty clear.
Okay.
So, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone who came and spoke tonight. Most of the items have been addressed already. Um, and I do want to acknowledge Mr. Gilmore. We're going to be, uh, discussing that under, uh, the report for choosing the board's members. So thank you for being here tonight. And I also like to, uh, thank Mr. Hawke for always coming and giving us updates. So we appreciate you. Keep going after those funds. I know, um, you guys do a great job and everyone else, they have been addressed with their concerns. So thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Morris, you asked about Tansy. I, um, just for the sake of time, I, uh, would maybe have staff give you some information, but they are located on Magnolia. I know that because they're close to my house. Uh, and if you Google Tansy, you'll see a lot of information. It's a beautiful place. You should stop by and get a cup of coffee and just sit down and relax. Uh, but I don't have the time to go over all their issues, everything they have. Thank you so much. Okay, moving forward, right now is the time for our consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. We have eight items on consent tonight. Item one is approval of the city council minutes of the regular meetings of February 4th and February 11th, 2025, and the dark meeting of February 18th, 2025. Item two is approval of the successor agency minutes of the joint meeting of January 28th, 2025. Item three is approval of the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of January 28th, 2025. Item four is approval of the parking authority minutes of the joint meeting of January 28th, 2025. Item five is approval of the public financing authority minutes of the joint meeting of September 24th, 2024. Item six is approval of the youth endowment services fund board minutes of January 28th, 2025. Item seven is adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of a 2024 grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice for law enforcement training and equipment, acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $15,284, and amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget by appropriating funds. Our final item, item eight, is adoption of resolutions approving the establishment of the salary and conflict of interest code designation for the classifications of utility business systems analyst, senior utility business systems analyst, principal utility business systems analyst, client technology specialist, lead client technology specialist, and principal client technology specialist, and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I, I'd like to request, um, item seven, um, if we could move it to the next available council meeting, if that's all right with my colleagues.
Can, um, Madam City Clerk, can you just read the title quickly so everybody knows which item it is?
Item seven, adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of the 2024 grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice for law enforcement training and equipment, acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $15,284, and amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget by appropriating funds.
Councilmember Rosati?
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, Madam, uh, Chair, I'm in agreement with moving that to the next meeting.
Thank you. And this is for the reason of having both the mayor and the vice mayor to be present.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So with that, we'll pull, uh, item seven for future agenda item. And would you like to make a motion on everything else?
I'll move, uh, all the other items, one through eight, with the conclusion of seven.
And I'll second that.
Okay, this motion was made by Councilmember Anthony, seconded by Councilmember Rosati. Madam City Clerk, could you take a roll call?
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rosati.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, so right now is the time for the public hearing. And this is the time and place for the public hearing for the introduction of an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter III, Environmental Protection, and Title X, Chapter I, zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code, to implement Burbank 2021-2029 Housing Element Program Number 22, related to the update of project appeal procedures and making other related amendments. If you wish to speak on this item in person, please present a salmon public hearing card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak on this item by calling in, you need to call in at 818-238-3335. Well, you will be placed on, in the queue until the public hearing comment period begins. I see already ready up there at the podium.
I'd like the record to reflect that, uh, Councilmember Anthony is in the chambers. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we begin, are there any disclosure relating to this hearing from council members?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes.
Do we have the complete file and exhibits, correspondence, and emails for the, and all the documents?
You do.
Thank you. Has this, um, has the city received any written communication on this matter and have been provided to all city council members?
Yes, we received five correspondences.
Thank you. With the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Bobby Keating, Associate Planner with CDD Planning. I'm joined by my colleagues, Principal Planner Amanda Landry and Senior Planner Greg Mirza-Avakin. Uh, may I please have the presentation? For your consideration is a proposed ordinance that would help reduce constraints to the development of housing by streamlining the general project review and approval process by updating appeal procedures in the Burbank Municipal Code, consistent with the city adopted in-state certified 2021-2029 Housing Element Housing Plan Program Number 22 and making other relevant changes. The reason for this item is that on September 27th, 2022, the city council adopted the Burbank 2021-2029 Housing Element with the overarching goal of protecting and promoting housing citywide. As required by state law, the Housing Element includes a housing plan, which defines the specific actions the city is required to undertake to achieve Housing Element's goals and policies. The Housing Plan includes 27 implementation programs. Under Goal Four of the Housing Element, to remove constraints to housing, Housing Plan Program Number 22 calls for the streamlining of project review and approval processes through updates to the appeal procedures for planning projects, the appeal forms to require specific information, and the standard template language used on public notices and agendas. Currently, the city's appeal procedures for development projects are outlined in two main sections of the zoning code. Generally, any person may appeal a decision by the director or planning commission on a project application by the 15th day following the date the decision is issued. Persons filing an appeal are required to explain the reasons for the appeal, although they are not currently required, to reference the code section or finding that is the basis for the appeal. The existing appeal procedures allow for an appellant to seek city council determination on an appeal by challenging the planning commission's decision on an appeal to a decision that was initially made by the director. The second appeal to city council for a decision initially made by the director can further delay the final decision on a project until all administrative remedies have been exhausted. Housing Plan Program 22 outlines a strategy for how to update the project appeal procedures with the objective of streamlining the project review and approval process. These proposed code amendments would, one, conclude the appeal process for housing projects at the planning commission by making the planning commission the final decision-making body for decisions on projects made by the director. Two, inform updates to the appeal form to specify that appellants must clearly identify the code section that is the basis of the appeal. And three, update the public notices and agendas with additional language to clearly specify that the issues raised by an appellant during the hearing shall be limited to those issues stated in the appeal application form. The updates to the appeal form, public notice, and agenda templates are not included in the proposed ordinance, but will be completed as administrative updates pending the council's approval of the ordinance. This diagram shows our existing appeal procedures. A decision that is initially made by the director, such as an administrative use permit, hillside development permit, or development review, may be appealed twice before the decision is final, whereas a decision that is initially made by the planning commission, such as for a conditional use permit or variance, may only be appealed once to the city council before becoming final. Noted decision that is initially reviewed by the city council, such as amendments to the municipal code outside of Title X, are final and may not be appealed. In order to implement Housing Element Program 22, the first main amendment staff is proposing would end the appeal process on a director's decision at the planning commission, making a director's decision final once appealed to the planning commission. Appeal procedures for projects that are initially reviewed by the planning commission and require final review and approval of the city council would remain unchanged. In order to implement the goals of Program 22, staff is recommending additional amendments to the BMC. Amendment two would amend the zoning use list in BMC Section 10-1502 to permit the multifamily residential with non-residential use, commonly known as mixed use, with an administrative use permit instead of a conditional use permit as currently required, making the planning commission the final review authority on appeals to mixed-use projects, with the goal of further streamlining the production of housing. Note that for mixed-use projects that include a non-residential component that by itself is a land use that requires a CUP, such as hotels in certain zones, then those projects would continue to be reviewed initially by the planning commission, making the council the final decision-maker on that appeal. Amendment three would consolidate and standardize the appeal procedures into BMC Sections 10-11907.2 and 10-11907.3. Currently, the appeal procedures are listed in multiple locations in the zoning code with inconsistent procedures regarding application processing and public noticing. This amendment is intended to make the appeal procedures more consistent and user-friendly in addition to streamlining the appeal procedures for both director and planning commission decisions for planning applications. Amendment four would clarify that the appeal procedures only apply to discretionary development review decisions and any decision to disapprove a ministerial development review application. Currently, the Burbank Municipal Code does not clearly distinguish between the appeal procedures for discretionary and ministerial development review decisions, which can cause confusion and uncertainty for applicants and the public. Amendment five would amend the notice and appeal process of environmental decisions listed in Title IX, Chapter III, to be consistent with state SEQA law. Currently, BMC Section 93107 includes a local process for the public notice of an environmental decision, or abbreviated the PNOED, that requires posting notices of decisions at the planning division counter when the city prepares a SEQA document or declares a project exempt. This process is in addition to the state noticing requirements mandated under SEQA, which further requires posting to the county clerk and state clearinghouse. Additionally, BMC Section 93108 outlines procedures for the appeal of environmental decisions to the planning commission, which is in conflict with the state administrative process that allows environmental decisions to be filed directly with council. In order to resolve this conflict and reduce confusion and uncertainty by the public, the proposed ordinance includes code amendments that would bring the PNOED process in conformance with state requirements and provide a direct process to administratively appeal SEQA determinations to the city council. Lastly, Amendment Six includes changes to the public notification timelines to comply with a recently approved State Assembly Bill 2904, which requires a minimum 20-day public noticing period for public hearings of the planning commission. twenty-day public noticing period for public hearings of the planning commission on proposed zone map amendments and zone text amendments. The planning commission considered the proposed zone text amendments to Title X and ordinance during their notice public hearing on January thirteenth, 2025. The commission voted unanimously to adopt a resolution recommending that the council consider the approval of the proposed ordinance. The planning commission recommendation was supported by their ability to find that the project satisfies California Government Code Section Six Five Eight Six Zero, which requires that modifications to the zoning code be consistent with the adopted general plan and the rest of the zoning code. The proposed ordinance has been evaluated under the SEQA and requires no further review. The proposed zone text amendments to Title X are consistent with the 2021-2029 Burbank Housing Element and, as such, were contemplated and studied in the city-certified program environmental impact report for the Housing Element. Furthermore, none of the proposed BMC amendments within the proposed ordinance require SEQA review because they only involve administrative and procedural updates to the BMC. Adoption of the ordinance is covered by the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant impact on the environment. The proposed ordinance involves modifications to administrative noticing requirements and procedural updates to internal review and approval bodies that will result in no direct or indirect physical changes to the environment. Therefore, pursuant to SEQA guideline Sections One Five Three Seven Eight, the proposed ordinance is not considered a project subject to the requirements of SEQA. In summary, the proposed ordinance will implement Housing Plan Program Twenty Two as adopted by city council as part of the Housing Element. It will streamline the project review and approval process of housing projects by updating the existing project appeal procedures to make the planning commission the final review authority on appeals to housing projects as stated in BMC Section Ten One Nineteen Oh Seven Point Two and the zoning use list in Section Ten One Five Oh Two. It will consolidate the appeal procedures into a central location within this city code by removing duplicative and inconsistent language, clarify the appealability of ministerial development review applications and SEQA determinations, and implement the twenty-day public noticing requirement per Assembly Bill Two Nine Oh Four. Lastly, if adopted, the proposed ordinance will inform administrative updates to appeal application forms, public notices, and agendas to require that the issues raised in an appeal hearing be limited to the basis specified in the appeal form. Finally, pursuant to the memo from the city attorney's office distributed earlier today, the proposed ordinance is being presented tonight with minor updates to confirm that certain procedural requirements for appeals continue to remain the same as they currently exist under the BMC. Specifically, the update removes the unintentional deletion of language in BMC Section Nine Three One Oh Eight relating to review and processing of environmental appeals, and adds language to BMC Sections Ten One Nineteen Oh Seven Point Two and Ten One Nineteen Oh Seven Point Three to confirm that scheduling and public notice of appeals will remain the same as currently provided in the BMC. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to amend BMC Title Nine and Title X as amended in the memo provided by city attorney and find that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any person who wished to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council on this public hearing item only. The public hearing public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, I know you handed me five speakers, five cards. Is that it?
We have five in person and one on the phone.
Okay, great. So with that, there's no more, no additional more cards will be taken, and we can go ahead and begin having our speakers to come forward. And based on the number of cards that I have, and the one caller, each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the council. With that, our first speaker is RP Kirkorian, followed by Juan Munoz.
Hello, honorable members of the city council. My name is RP Kirkorian, and I am a UCLA student interning with Unite Here Local Eleven. I was born and raised in Burbank, and I care deeply about expanding housing in our city while ensuring responsible development. I'm concerned that the proposed zone ordinance goes beyond the goal of streamlining housing by potentially applying changes to larger mixed-use projects, including those with hotel and motel components. Housing should not be held up by unnecessary red tape, but we also need to make sure non-housing developments don't bypass important community input and oversight. I urge the council to make two key modifications. The ordinance should keep the focus on housing. Mixed-use projects that include hotels or motels should go through a conditional use permit process with the planning commission instead of receiving approval at the director level. Again, housing should be prioritized and should not be lumped in with large commercial products that have different impacts and are more intense uses. And second, the ordinance should ensure a fair and accessible appeals process. Detailed legal justifications may create unnecessary barriers for residents. We ask that the council make the process more accessible, especially for larger projects that include significant commercial components. These reasonable changes will help ensure that we simplify housing while maintaining public oversight where it matters most. I urge the city council to adopt these modifications. Thank you for your time.
Now we have Juan Munoz, followed by Jim Casey.
Honorable members of the Burbank City Council, my name is Juan Munoz, and I am here on behalf of Unite Here Local Eleven, which represents over four hundred hospitality workers who live or work in Burbank and have a vested interest in ensuring responsible development. While our union supports efforts to streamline housing approvals, we are concerned that the proposed ordinance goes beyond this intent by potentially applying changes to larger mixed-use projects, including those with hotel and motel components. These projects warrant greater discretion, not less. As RP outlined, we respectfully request two modifications to the item as presented. One, the ordinance should clarify that mixed-use projects that include hotels or motels require a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission rather than AUP at the director level. And I think it's just that we remove any potential ambiguity there, and of course, this change would still ensure compliance with state law. Number two, this ordinance should make the appeals process more accessible. While we understand limiting frivolous appeals on housing decisions, we think that the requirement for appeals to be submitted in person with detailed legal justifications creates an unnecessary limitation and waiver of discretion. We ask that appeals for complex projects, including those with significant non-residential uses, not be subject to this overly rigid legal specificity. These regional, I'm sorry, these reasonable changes will ensure responsible oversight of potentially large-scale developments while maintaining public participation. We submitted proposed modifications that I think were distributed to you all that would effectuate these changes, and we also previously submitted a comment letter, and we hope that the city council can consider these two modifications. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Jim Casey, followed by Bob Curas.
Good evening, city council, staff, and members of the community. My name is Jim Casey. I'm a twenty-five-year Burbank resident, a local realtor, and I head up an organization called Preserve Burbank. We're a grassroots organization of over four hundred Burbank residents who came together in 2009 to encourage historic preservation in our city. I served for three years on the Heritage Commission. Around 2014, Preserve Burbank was forced to shift gears when we discovered egregious building code violations occurring on multiple large home projects. After presenting photographic evidence of these violations to city council, an interim development construction ordinance was passed to halt all new home construction for two years, and while staff drafted the single-family design guidelines. The city spent a quarter of a million dollars in outreach and hired an outside consultant to draft these guidelines. Preserve Burbank was in attendance for planning and city council meetings the entire way until the guidelines were put in place. Around the same time, Preserve Burbank assisted two local residents who were appealing enormous homes that had been approved by the planning department that we felt violated the building codes and the hillside ordinance. We each paid a hundred ninety-nine dollars to appeal these projects to the planning commission. Both appeals were rejected by the planning commission. We then paid out-of-pocket another hundred ninety-nine dollars each to appeal these projects to city council. Both appeals were upheld five to zero by the city council members, with the mayor commenting to staff, "How on earth did these projects get this far before they were denied?" It was a pretty embarrassing moment for the community development director, and the director, Patrick Prescott, got to work quickly to make sure it would never happen again. The next appeal we attempted to file was held up when we discovered the appeal fee had been raised to one thousand one hundred dollars. After some research, we discovered this fee had been raised without direction from the city council, and to add insult to injury, it was never specifically disclosed to the council when it was folded into hundreds of other fees that were being approved. It was only after we brought this to the attention of the council was a hearing scheduled to address the increase. I don't know how many appeals have been filed in recent years, and we have been perfectly happy with the single-family design guidelines as they were drafted. Two years ago, this council rescinded most of the recommendations in the guidelines as staff claimed these projects were holding up building permits across the board. No reassessment of this decision has been made in two years. Now staff wants you, elected members of the city council, to give up your authority to override the poor decisions that are often made in the planning department and the planning commission. This has to stop. Please do not allow this thinly veiled power grab slip under the radar. Please do not approve the ZTA as drafted. I think two thousand two hundred dollars to get to city council for an appeal is already outrageous.
Thank you. Now followed by Mr. Bob Curas.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Bob Curas. I wanted to say that I think you should continue the appeal process for the city council because I don't think there's enough. Going through, trying to go through planning, there was delay after delay after delay. My neighbor never got a permit, and all of a sudden, after a long period of time, they, all of a sudden, I was told by staff, "We can't do anything because permit's no longer required." I did bring the issue up to city council a couple of weeks ago, and we're still waiting for a response from the city on that. But I think it's important that there's a lot of issues that can affect housing, and it needs, you need to consider some of these large projects or even houses that are being built, that they can appeal it all the way to the city council. I think it's very important. And in a lot of cases, it can have a significant impact on the value of someone's property by some of the things that are done at adjacent properties. So that's, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last in-person speaker is Simon Hamel.
Good evening, members of council. Simon Hamel, eighteen-year resident and Burbank homeowner. I am concerned about the proposed loss of democratic representation. When we cut back opportunities for residents to shape their neighborhoods, we're taking away their right to speak directly to elected officials. In my experience, having the option of appealing to the city council was crucial in ensuring a project complied with the law. If not for the specter of being able to go on to a second appeal to city council, we wouldn't have been able to force the city to commit in writing to changes that included lowering the building height by four feet, ensuring it complied with the law, without, of course, a lawsuit. Even though the appeal was denied, that commitment wasn't confirmed during the planning commission appeal. Although that was a residential appeal, the same principle applies to various commercial projects worth tens of millions of dollars. Having to hire a lawyer to properly file in only ten days makes appealing only for the rich. You might consider turning the planning board into, or planning commission into an elected body. If not, you run the risk of having a lot more public upset on the level of the Raising Canes Chicken incident. We often talk about the streamlining of the process, but one thing we're streamlining is the exodus of the film industry. Most families want to own their single-family house on a single-family lot with a short commute to be part of their kid's childhood and privacy without someone building an ADU tower overlooking their kid's swimming. You can still have these things while working in the film industry if you leave California. How does any of what's happening help people in the film industry achieve these goals inside of California? Another point, the state wants you to spy on how each ADU is being used. If they're mandating that, are they funding it? We should also track if new structures are owner-occupied or just rentals. Is California becoming a place where you can own or just rent forever? The place to own your future might well be outside of California. Most people outside California don't realize that in Cali, we've lost the right to self-govern our towns. They don't know the state keeps your tax money unless you build what they say, where they say, when they say, from hundreds of miles away. Consider also perhaps delaying this vote until all of you are here, as you did the other items. Let's preserve our community's democratic input and ensure our neighborhoods are shaped by all of us who live in them and not by people hundreds of miles away in Sacramento. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. And now we turn into calling in. So I just want to remind our callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV computer and/or computer and take your phone off speakers when you deliver the public comment.
The caller is Sue Clearman.
Sue, you're on right now, so please go ahead and address council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. There are several components to the proposed ordinance, and I wish to speak to the critical items concerning appeals to city council. I urge you to preserve and protect our rights as citizens to appeal projects before you, city council, as are elected officials. The issue is not about streamlining. Appeals are not the problem. If I was to ask, "When was the last time you heard an appeal before council?", if you have to think for a moment, it's because they are few and far between. Back in 2019, there was an appeal for a project on the corner of Cedar and Sixth to Burbank. Quick summary, the project was appealed, council heard the appeal, and after robust public comment and input by all parties, council did approve the project. However, this was not before several important findings were discovered and critical information brought to light as a result of this appeal. Valuable learnings for future projects. The original property had several older garden-style apartments on it, lower rents, and considered affordable. As a result of this appeal to council, it was learned that the majority of existing residents were indeed low-income, and at least one resident was very low-income, a veteran who lived there. They were all affected, all displaced, when the developer purchased the property. The new project is high-density with luxury units, rooftop deck, interior courtyard, pushing the envelope to the max, with exemptions and waivers galore, but in the end, it offered only a few affordable units. As a result of the appeal before council, it was discovered that this project actually decreased the number of affordable housing units in Burbank. The city lost or gave away affordable housing units. The existing low-income residents were all displaced and kicked to the curb. When a council member asked the developer, "Were there any considerations for the existing residents, maybe to help find some affordable housing?", the developer basically said no, and when he purchased the property, it had, it happened to have people living on it. You can watch the video for yourself and see how existing residents were referred to as collateral damage. I purchased the land, and it just happened to have people living on it. Well, those people were Burbank residents. What if there is another Cedar and Sixth project on the horizon? How many residents will be directly impacted? The planning commission cannot, cannot be the deciding body for appeal. They are not elected officials and cannot be held accountable to the same standards. It's important, when council hears an appeal, valuable information is shared during a public hearing, findings, evidence presented by the citizens to help improve future projects. There are very few appeals submitted. Appeals are not the problem, and they have become more expensive as staff has targeted increased appeal fees to discourage residents.
Sue, your time, your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. I want to confirm, we don't have anyone else online.
That was our last caller.
Okay, there will be no further public comments. Okay, there will be no further public comments. I now declare the public hearing, public comment period closed. Thank you for that. With the representatives from the community development, like to make any further comments.
Yes, hi, members of the council. Staff would like to address, excuse me, concerns I made during public comment regarding the removal of the city council as the elected body and as the final decision-maker on projects initially reviewed by the director. The planning commission was established by the voters under the city charter and is directly appointed by the city council. The commission has already granted authority to make certain decisions on behalf of the council on land use zoning applications. Therefore, the planning commission is the appropriate final decision-maker on appeals to director land, uh, to, decisions by the director on land use and zoning and is a direct requirement of implementation program in the council-adopted and state-certified housing element. Additionally, the council will continue to be the final decision-maker on appeals to decisions of the planning commission such as conditional use permits and variances and will remain the first and final decision-maker for projects such as planned developments. Staff also heard concerns from members of the public regarding the proposed amendment to the permissibility of residential mixed-use projects. As proposed, a mixed-use project would be permitted with administrative use permit where a conditional use permit is currently required. For other uses that may be a component of mixed-use projects such as a hotel, those would continue to be permitted as currently listed in the zoning use list in BMC Section 101502. So for example, a CUP is currently required for a new hotel in the C2 zone when it is located within 150 feet of a residential zone. This requirement would remain in place so that a mixed-use project with a hotel in this location would be required to have a conditional use permit, making the planning commission the initial decision-maker and the council the final decision-maker on appeal. Lastly, regarding concerns that the proposed ordinance would remove the ability to appeal projects, with the exception of decisions approving ministerial DR applications, all projects are currently appealable and would remain appealable. The only difference is that director decisions would be permitted to be appealed once to the planning commission, who is again, the council-appointed authority on matters of land use and zoning implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff members want to weigh in? Nope. Now I turn into my, to my colleagues and see if you have any comments.
Just real quick, there was some discussion about mixed use. I mean, we call it, what do we call it, multifamily, residential with commercial. Can you show me, I'm trying to find the attachment where we specifically changed that language. Do you mind just finding that for me? Sorry. Do you have it here? Three?
I believe it's on page three, number two. Yeah, this is amended for zone use and then, it's in the staff report.
Okay.
Page three.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony, did you have further comments or should we go to council? Okay, so I'll go to councilmember Rizadi.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, staff. I'm going to stay on the mixed use. Can you just delve in that a little bit more? So let's just say, for instance, I'm just going back in history, Tolaria. Where would that fall under AUP or CUP in, in this new text?
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Amanda Landry, principal planner, CUD planning. So for Tolaria, that was a, through a different process. I believe it was a PD.
It's PD.
So that requires a legislative decision by the council. They're the final decision-makers for that type of application. So all PDs and DAs end up with the council for final decision-making.
So give me an example of a mixed use other than a hotel being, being mixed with it, just.
Sure. So a traditional mixed use you might think of on a typical Main Street America is residential above a small retail or an office. That is a most often found in Burbank. We have a few of them along our corridors. So that's a typical mixed use.
What about First Street? Would that be?
That is also a type of mixed use. It's a little larger than what we have seen in the past, but it is what that applicant's made.
I believe Mr. Ramirez is about to approach the podium. Thank you.
If I may, councilmembers, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director. A more recent example is the project that's being developed on the Frye site. That was a residential project and it also had an office component. So that was a mixed-use residential project with a non-residential component. So, and that went through a conditional use permit and was reviewed and processed. The examples that we're giving here in the case, let's just say for an example, someone wanted to do a hotel project with a residential development. The way the code is written, if the conditional use permit is required for the hotel, then that would be part of the review process and therefore, the entire project would be considered by the planning commission and that could be appealed to the council.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to stay on mixed use? Go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, the Frye's location, I mentioned Frye's. That was, what was, what was applied for, was that BYRIT?
No, at that time.
But then just needed the CUP?
It required a CUP for the mixed-use component.
Okay, for the mixed-use component. Cause we, as far as I'm concerned, other than like a Front Street plan development, we don't currently have any available mixed-use zoning that's coming, that's.
Well, all of our commercial corridors allow mixed use, as you can see in the land use table. We allow it with restrictions through CUP.
And is there anything that we've already built other than a planned development that has mixed use? Cause I know Tolaria, but Frye's isn't open yet, First Street's not open yet.
Reese and Verdugo. Yeah.
Reese and Verdugo, okay.
And that one's an example of a lower-scale mixed use. It's about two stories.
Okay.
Residential above commercial.
And all of those had to, they went to planning board to get the CUP and if someone wanted to appeal that project, that project, because it had a CUP, would have to come to us.
Correct.
And so what I'm reading here is currently, that's the way it is, but you're asking to remove that and make it an administrative use permit. And so basically Reese and Verdugo, or Frye's, or if a new Tolaria wanted to come in, that's not a planned, but had the zoning for it. Instead of applying for a CUP for mixed use, they would get an AUP and it would go to the director if they check the boxes and approve it. And then if there was an appeal, it would go to planning board instead.
Correct, planning commission.
Okay, so we wouldn't see any mixed-use developments unless, for some reason, it included a CUP on something else, not a mixed-use CUP, but something else like they needed a driveway, or there's a hotel, or something like that.
There is one provision in our code and it's tied into the California Environmental Quality Act that, sorry.
What are we building?
I don't know what that was. But as I was saying, tied into the Environmental Quality Act, the CEQA decision for those projects, for an AUP that is decided by the planning commission, the CEQA decision alone can be appealed to.
So CEQA can be appealed and that comes to us?
Yes.
But that's only on environmental stuff?
Only for respect to CEQA decisions.
Okay. And I know, just off the top of my head, I know the state is trying to crack down on CEQA application, appeals abuses, so.
Yeah.
If I may add.
Yes, Mr. Ramirez.
Two, two examples to give you. If we had a mixed-use project that wanted to include ground floor drive-through restaurant, that would require a CUP and therefore, that home mixed-use project would go before the planning commission and that could be appealable to you. If someone wanted to do a combination housing with hotel and the hotel requires a CUP because it's within 150 feet of residential, that would also go to the planning commission and could be appealed to the council. So those specific examples, it sounds like the concern is with hotels, motels, and I guess other people would be concerned if it was drive-through and others may be concerned if there was a firearms retailer that was going in. Those would still, if those have higher levels of review, that would require to go to the commission, which in those cases, a CUP would be required, that would go to the commission and then could be appealed to council. So, so we want to make the distinction, there's mixed-use projects, typically your mixed-use projects are like First Street where it's residential and you have some ground floor neighborhood serving uses. But in these particular instances with the hotel residential development, we haven't had a development like that, but that component currently is conditionally permitted in many of the zones. And looking at your corridors, the C2, C3, which are Victory, Magnolia, Olive, Glen Oaks, most of those properties, looking at them just on the zoning maps, they're within 150 feet of residential, so those would require a CUP as well.
Mr. Ramirez, why are you there? One of our speakers, Mr. Munius, I believe, mentioned the language, maybe perhaps it's a little bit confusing. And the language that I'm looking at is the language I was referring councilmember Anthony to, which is on page three, number two. Is there a way that the language can be straightforward, clear to that there is, there will be a CUP process and appeal to city council in the event there is a requirement for CUP as, as we're discussing right now? Is it possible to make it a little bit more clear?
The, I believe there's language in the code itself that talks about when you have multiple entitlements and there's an entitlement that has a higher level of discretionary review, i.e. like, let's say something that was required approval by staff initially, but there was a component that required discretionary approval by the commission, the entire project gets elevated to that next level of review. And that's already in our regulation.
So they would have to go refer to the code section to make sure the language.
When it comes in as an application, we would refer to the code section and then tell them that they're going to need to go before the planning commission.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions?
Can you provide an example of, where am I? Page three, item one.
So Bobby Keating, Associate Planner. Item one states, "Update to the appeal process for land use entitlements as established in BMC, including the initial and final review bodies for discretionary land use applications. For projects where the community development director is the original decision-maker, the planning commission will be the final decision-making body to hear related appeals. For projects where the planning commission is the original decision-maker, the city council will remain the final decision-making body to hear related appeals." So examples of when, of director-level decisions would be AUPs as discussed in the context of mixed-use projects. AUPs are required for other types of uses as well, such as alcohol sales and restaurants and within the downtown area. And the development review that is also a director's level decision, which is required for most commercial projects and, it's technically required for all projects except where exempted. Those would be decided by the director and appealed to planning commission.
Okay. Good, go ahead.
You're good.
So there was a question about cumbersome and burdensome language in filling out the appeal. Attachment 121 on the, the news, the city attorney's office memorandum, we got, has some red lines through it. Attachment 1 dash 21, "Time and manner of appeal," letter C. Number two, "Appeal must be submitted in person to the office of the planning division on a form provided by the city planner and must include the legal basis for appeal." And that's changed. Currently, it's a statement of reasons for the appeal. So I know we're trying to get the appellant to sort of guide staff into where to look and I get that. When we say the legal basis, are we asking them to cite city code on the form? Are we guiding them to say, "Hey, where in the building code are you looking to appeal"? And at the end of the day, if someone just puts in there, it's unconstitutional. Like, do we still accept the appeal? Does it? Is this language here, when we say legal basis, is this prohibiting certain people from being able to follow the appeal process?
Excuse me. Planning staff is tasked with assisting members of the public in navigating the zoning code, which admittedly is, you know, complicated. And so when someone would come for an appeal, they, as part of filling out the application form, planning staff would guide them towards the findings that are required to make that decision and they would basically need to select one of those findings as the basis for the appeal and explain why.
Is that current practice?
No, that's not. Currently, anyone can give any reason for an appeal, which is why we'll be updating the forms to require more specificity.
So in theory, moving forward, if we give them a list of findings, aren't they just going to circle one or more and be done with it?
Technically, they could, but they would, you know, that wouldn't really hold, hold up well within the appeal hearing itself.
Well, because they would have to, sorry to cut you off. They're going to have to present evidence at the hearing. But my concern is, they're on a 15-day clock to get the appeal in the door. And so from my understanding, once the appeal is had and there's a body in front of us and we're listening to it, or planning commission is listening to it, they could pretty much bring up anything they want. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to having them, you know, select and highlight. I think it might be easier for them, but at the end of the day, we're basically just letting them pick whatever and then weeks or months later, after they've had the time to go through the code and you, maybe even hire a lawyer or an architect or something like that, now they've got their whole thing, they're, they're not bound by what they selected at the beginning. Am I right?
Not currently, but as part of the proposed update, they would. And this is an effort to make sure that staff is adequately prepared to the issues raised by the appellant.
Okay.
I believe staff wants to jump in on that and provide additional information.
Yes, good evening, Amanda Landry, CUD planning. Just to provide some additional context to this, the purpose of revising our application forms to make it clear that appellants have to specify the grounds for the appeal. For example, I'm sure the council members recently, there was an appeal for a wireless telecommunications facility and it's very clear on what grounds that, that facility can be granted. An AUP had specific findings that the city had to make and that the project was subject to. In that case, there were no provisions on how or what the appellants could state as part of their appeal. So there were a lot of concepts introduced that were actually, the city is prohibited from looking at under federal law. So we want to make it clear to everyone, appellants and applicants, how they can successfully move forward with their projects, either as the appellant or the applicant, by what grounds they can actually talk about, so they don't have to invest their time and money into things that the city can't even consider as part of our appeal. In addition, the state laws have been trending towards requiring cities to adopt objective development standards because they can, they're easily verified. Everyone can understand what those objective development standards are. In the past, when we had very subjective sort of guidelines, it was confusing to everyone. So now that we have these objective development standards, it's easy for appellants and staff to do an analysis of a project and identify whether or not it complies with code. And an appellant can identify, "Well, you didn't meet this one objective development standard. We disagreed with the staff's assessment, so this is what we're appealing on." So it's very clear for everyone moving forward. It just makes the process, the expectations clear on all sides.
I have a quick question regarding to that. So what I hear you saying, it's, it's kind of an advantage for the appellant to file under guideline restrictions, so you can have an opportunity to say, "Yes, you do have a solid appeal" or "No, you don't" under those guidelines.
Yeah, staff, when we're, people come to us to ask for help and assistance in applying for things and we can tell them, "Here are the objective standards that apply to this project" and those are usually listed in a staff report or a decision letter anyways. And here are the findings that are required to be made for this project, which again, those are also listed in a staff report or a decision letter. So we can point them to that and say, "These are the areas in which you should focus if you're going to submit an appeal."
Councilmember Rizadi.
You're good.
You're good?
Yeah.
If you are factually incorrect, are you granted an appeal?
Can you clarify the example?
So the appellant is saying that the roof is 70 feet and it's actually, we know, it's 60 feet. Can they appeal?
Yes, they can appeal and say their claim is that they believe it doesn't comply. And then upon appeal, the consideration of the appeal, city staff would verify and demonstrate that yes, the facts are as we specified originally and it does. that, yes, the facts are as we specified originally, and it does comply. Or if there was some sort of mistake that was made, we can verify that that mistake was made.
But if they're factually incorrect, they can still move forward with the appeal?
If that is their belief, that they, they are correct, but we can show that there's evidence that they are incorrect, that would just be a part of the process. It would come out as part of the appeal process.
May I clarify one thing, Greg Mirzavaki, Senior Planner? The, this procedural change is actually a listed requirement in the Housing Element Program 22. Two of the bullet points directly address your earlier question. With the first one, that the city, the Housing Element compels us to update the appeal form to specify that appellants need to clarify, clearly identify, the findings slash criteria that are the basis of the appeal, making it mandatory for an appellant to specify the applicable code sections and reasons for the appeal. And the other bullet point that is relevant is that the city will update the public notices and agendas with additional language to require that the issues raised by an appellant during the hearing be limited only to those topics that are specified in the appeal form.
Okay, I'm good.
If I may make a small clarification. Good evening, Councilmembers Lisa Currihara, Senior Assistant City Attorney. There is a little bit of a nuance to this. I want to point out that right now, when an item is appealed, the review body reviews that appeal de novo, and that standard of review is going to remain the same. What that means is that the planning commission or the city council, when they are hearing the appeal, they not only will consider the alleged basis for the appeal, but they also have the discretion to reopen any of the findings that need to be made in order to grant the original project approval. So, so essentially, the standard of review in that the reviewing body can review the decision de novo remains the same. This, the ability to require appellants to specify the legal basis for their appeal really helps staff narrow the discussion so that we can understand why we are bringing an appeal forward. However, if the reviewing body notices that an other, that a separate error was made during the lower decision, they can certainly point that out and use that as a basis to not make a finding and not move a project forward.
Councilmember Anthony?
Um, I, I understand that, and I understand that, you know, in a de novo hearing, anyone, either, either council or, or planning commission can bring up anything. They are the, you know, adjudicating body at that point. My, my concern is by creating a system where you, you know, have a list of items that can be appealed on a specific project and then a list of findings, most of the people out in Burbank are not planners, they're not architects, they're not builders, right? So for them to be on a 15-day shot clock to walk in and say, I know it's not the right height, I'm confident that it's not the, whether they're wrong or not, I'm confident. For them to be able to find the city code and to understand which piece it is, what I, what I'm afraid is going to happen is that they're simply going to walk in and circle every single option and basically ruin the entire point of doing that. That, which leaves the door open for them to cover everything they want in the hearing. So.
Did, did I hear staff say that if someone came to you and said, this is the problem I'm having, you would walk them through the, the process with what code it is? And what they, am I correct? Yeah. So if you, if you didn't have the lingo and you said, hey, I think this house is encroaching upon my neighbor, they would walk you through the process on how to fill out the application with the correct information? I think the specificity is important because I think if you just leave it open, that we're just appealing the whole project, it just wastes a lot of time.
I, I agree. When we get into deliberation, I agree with you. I want to, I'm, I'm going to bring up a, a possible compromise on this. Yeah.
I have a question, and I guess it's in relation to this discussion. If you walk me through the process now, and how long does it take to complete the appeal process, and how long would we save the time-wise to save for a project, for example, that can, that everybody's waiting to complete for, whether it's housing or commercial? Walk me through that process, please, a timeline.
Um, so an appeal of a director's decision to the planning commission can take approximately six months. A subsequent second appeal to the council on that same decision can take six or more months, sometimes six to nine months. So by reducing the amount of time that a project applicant is moving through the appeal process, that would further streamline their production of housing by saving them holding costs and things like that, so they can actually get the building in the ground.
And I also wanted just to add to Mr. Keating's point is that in our Housing Element, our Certified Housing Element that the city council adopted, the constraints to housing related to governmental actions specifically identified the length of time that it takes to process housing development projects and identified exactly that the appeal process was problematic in contributing to delaying the development of housing. And that's why we have that program item number 22, which requires us to modify our appeal process and our appeal application forms to be a lot more specific and streamlined.
Thank you. Because in the meantime, as the appeal process is happening almost over a year, the project will have to be on hold, and that delays, you know, the, the housing, it delays the whole entire project and the cost of the project. And this is the point that we were trying to look at, is streamlining and expediting the process, so we're not, you know, caught up in the appeal for additional six months before it comes to council. That's correct, from what staff is bringing this to us, because there is obviously an issue with the length of the appeal process. Is there any way we can make it shorter than that? I mean, what, what takes the six months? Is it the scheduling, the planning board, the-
We don't have our specific plans yet.
True. That is true.
As the council may know, there is a lot of work that goes into preparing staff reports, and with an appellate and applicant, there's a lot of coordination that is required to get everyone in the same room at the same time for our discussion.
Um, the other question I have in regards to the language that will be put on the application for appeal is if it requires CEQA, does this, first we would have to do CEQA and then they can file an appeal, or do they file an appeal and then, and then CEQA happens?
So the CEQA determination is made in conjunction with the overall project decision. So that information will be known upon the deliberative body's decision.
So in advance, when somebody's filing an appeal, because we had, I personally had some conversation with members of the public in regards to what if CEQA comes in at a, you know, additional language, and I filled out an application and I didn't put something specific that maybe came up in the CEQA report? So that the appellant will have that information in advance before filing an appeal, so it would be offered to them to add any information part of CEQA?
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. One more question in regards to the timing right now, when you've complete the appeal, the application. I know the state now says they have 20 days, that we allowed to give them 20 days versus 15?
Um, so the 20-day noticing requirement, that's part of this proposed ordinance, is an implementation of Assembly Bill 2904 that specifically refers to the, a public notice that's required of decisions of the planning commission on zone text amendments and zone map amendments. So that does not impact the amount of time a member of the public would have to appeal a project. Those period, time periods would remain in place.
Okay. Can you give us those times?
Uh, 15 calendar days.
Okay. So we're not changing that, reducing it to 10 days? Okay. Some emails came in assuming it was 10 days, and I think it was the 10-day posting notice that-
That's correct. Admittedly, it does get a bit confusing, but for noticing of a public hearing, it's 10 business days. That remains unchanged. And then it's a 15-day appeal period, and that's calendar days.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody with other questions? Staff has any more input?
Thank you.
Okay. So now I declare the public hearing closed, and council will now deliberate on what council's pleasure, like, here we go. I know Councilmember Resad likes this.
Um, so we talked a little bit about the appeal process and listing the cause, and then a little bit about AUPs. So I wanted to, I'm okay with changing the language where they have to write the legal basis. I think it would actually help them if you give them the list and give them the findings. I actually think that would cut down on frivolous lawsuits, on frivolous appeals. But my only concern is that somebody who may not be able to articulate what exactly is going on, somebody lives 500 feet from a, a project, and they get the notice, and they know something that's in the backyard or in their alleyway that maybe staff isn't aware of or something else, they may not be able to articulate it. They've only got 15 days. They may select something, and then in the three or six months leading up to the hearing, they go out, they talk to community members, they hire a lawyer or an architect or somebody, and they realize, oh, no, I've marked the wrong one. That's my only concern. And I know it's theoretical, but for me, simply, and, and I get that the body that makes the decision, it is a de novo hearing, meaning anybody in the adjudicating body can bring up new evidence and, and re-review the project. And I get that part. But all I'm asking is that we, fine, keep the legal basis for the appeal, have them listed, but then don't put, put some language in there to say that it is a de novo hearing, that new evidence can be brought forth, just so that they know at the end of the day, three months or six months into the thing, they're like, wait, but this thing, I can't even talk about it on the appelle, appellate. I can't even bring it up. So that, that's my only concern. And so I think that, for me, that would be a nice compromise. So that, yes, at the front, we front-load it, look, here's, here's your findings. If you don't meet these findings, you can appeal all day. If you don't meet the findings, it's not going to be voted. But after you select it, if you find something later, that's all. So allow the appellant to bring something else. That, that's my suggestion.
I'm just a little confused. So we have to know what we're appealing, right? To write, to make the appeal?
Right.
So you're saying, okay, so you make the appeal, and then you find something else that you want to appeal?
Well, one, any of the other findings. I'm just saying that typically, they're going to come in, they're going to look at the findings, they're going to say, okay, here's the list, that's the one I want to appeal. I'm saying, you know, I would guess 99% of the time, when we get to the final hearing, that's what they're going to be considering. All I'm worried about is if the appellant finds a second or third finding that is important, I mean, there are ways of doing public comment and reaching out to council members and asking them to bring it up, but I don't want to limit them if they find that there's another finding that they can bring up during the appeals process, that they're, that they're not bound by just because they checked one box at the very beginning.
So the language doesn't say that the appeal is limited only to the, if they, if they identify one item. The language doesn't say they're limited to one item. The language says must include a legal basis. And there's different words that were used in the Housing Element, you know, there could be a different way of describing it, because people might not know what legal basis means. The specific findings on the approval which you dispute is another way of saying it. But you are still, like, they don't have to present their evidence for the appeal until the night of the appeal hearing. And it's still limited to the grounds, and because both 1907.2 and 1907.3 are de novo hearings, you essentially have that. But the goal is to reduce frivolous appeals. So the idea that you're going to keep it open for any possible argument they can make is, is contradictory to being able to allow property owners to apply for entitlements and enjoy those entitlements.
So, so let me ask you this. They walk in, yes, they see the list, and they pick one list, and then say during the hearing, the, the appellant comes up here and they get their allotted time, they're obviously going to talk about the one finding that they picked, but staff and City Attorney's Office is not going to stop them from talking if they start to bring up other evidence?
No. So the way an appeal hearing works is that evidence is presented, both by the appellant and the applicant, and the decision-making body, the planning commission or the city council, has to still adopt all the findings.
Okay.
So a de novo review means they're making that decision on all the points, not just one point. So in court proceedings, you file an appeal on certain grounds, and those grounds are closed. You have to file leave to amend to change those. This isn't that strict. They just need a legal basis. They can't say, I hate the color of the house.
Because they're appealing the whole project.
They're appealing the whole project.
Okay.
Right? And the project approvals have to be adopted anew. All the findings have to be made. So if there's substantial evidence that one of the findings can't be made, that record has to be complete when the planning commission or the city council adopts that approval. So the burden is still on the decision-maker to make all the findings, even if they only challenge one. And once the appeal hearing is open, like this appeal, not appeal, but this hearing tonight, anyone in the public gets to come up and make arguments, and the record has to address all of those issues. The, the evidence has to be complete for that decision.
Okay.
So other people, other than the appellant, the appellant files the appeal, and if the appellant withdraws the appeal, the appeal hearing might not happen. But if it does happen, then the whole community gets to come out and take shots at the project.
Okay.
And the approval still has to stand on its own.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Okay. I think that, that's, that should be fine.
Unless staff somehow identify a limited review of the project after an appeal is accepted, which I don't think I saw.
Okay. My other concern is with moving all mixed use from CUP to AUP. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but we have, as Councilmember Resad mentioned, we have a number of specific plans coming. We have a big general plan update coming. Here's what I'd like to offer. I'd like to keep all of the mixed use as a CUP for now, and after, because, because it's still pretty new for us. We don't have that many mixed use projects. Give it a year. 12 months after we do the final general plan update to get all of our new specific plans, I'd like to come back and just on this very narrow section, review all the projects that have come through that are mixed use, and how many have appealed, and if it's super burdensome, and we've gotten a bunch, maybe we change it. But then at that point, if it's not, I don't mind keeping it with us.
So I'm kind of on the fence with that, too. So a project the size of Fries, I think I would like to see. And I don't, I don't know how many projects, you know, are going to be like that. Most of them are probably going to be planned developments, and some of them are going to be CUPs, so with hotels and stuff attached to it. But something the size of Fries, I'd like to have the last look at.
Yeah, I'd say keep a CUP for now. Bring it back in a year. If, 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 if stuff like Fries isn't getting appealed, if none of these big projects are, you know, that's, I, I think it'd be fine. So I just want to give it a year.
Mr. Ramirez, please come up.
Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director. I guess I'd want to kind of rephrase the discussion a little bit when it talk about mixed use projects and CUPs. In the absence of objective standards in the past, including the ones that were adopted under our requirements for, to comply with AB 2011 and SB 35, you did develop objective standards that did not exist before. And so there's a very clear path for a developer to meet those requirements, and in essence, abide by the wish of the council and the community by adopting them. I will say, when you adopted the historic, the Housing Element overlay zone, you also adopted byright uses on those projects, and they're, and they're mixed use and residential. adopted by right uses on those projects and they're, they're mixed use and residential. So what we're proposing tonight is to just continue down that path and implement the housing element as it's being applied. If there's a specific issue with a use, especially like with the specific plans, when that comes forward, the idea is to introduce all the objective standards you want to see in the project so that the project, when it comes to fruition and is presented to the community, that it's meeting all of your requirements. In the past, we didn't have that option, so every project coming forward was kind of like a brand new consideration and you were kind of, in essence, we were developing standards for that particular project. So the, the intent is that the specific plans with the programmatic EIRs are going to facilitate the ability to upfront tell developers what you expect them to do to be able to get city approvals. The whole point of, of making the conditional use permit an AUP is to streamline that process because if the point of a CUP is, is to have a meeting and analyze the impacts to the land uses, that's something that staff can do and eventually the, on appeal, the planning commission can do on your behalf. What's important on that end is that the development standards that guide that review are what you would be focused on, so like the specific plans. But there are other areas that are outside of the specific plans that the current standards that we have along the corridors with the new requirements already kind of hold projects to task on. So I'd kind of just shift it if it's, if the question is, we want to make sure that the project's going to be in conformance with the community wants and needs, then I think the focus is not on holding the CUP as the lever, but focusing on developing the standards that are going to apply to the project. So I just wanted to throw that in for the conversation. At the end of the day, it's the will of the council, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware.
Can, can I ask you?
Sure.
How many, how many, planning board meets, what, twice a month?
They meet twice a month.
How much of their docket is filled with CUPs right now?
It varies. It depends if we have CUPs for alcohol, if we have CUPs for other things, there's not a lot of, it all depends on what the applications submittals are for. In a similar fashion, going through a project, if it's approved by right or if it's a, in this case, an AUP and someone is appealing that and it goes to the commission, then that particular project would be considered and evaluated on its own merits.
Well, how, how much mixed use is going through planning board right now? Like, are we seeing a lot of that?
I think it's, well, if you're asking me as the planner, how many mixed use projects we're considering?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Well, no, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying is, mixed use projects coming in for review are now coming in and they're looking at their options under SB 35, AB 2011, and they're also looking at the new requirements along the commercial corridors, as well as now that you've adopted the housing element overlay zone, those are the applications that are actually currently being processed. So, so I say that because the developers are looking at the options where streamlining is basically a by right requirement.
So the mixed use, if we keep it as, if we keep all mixed use as a CUP, that means every single mixed use has to go to planning board unless they do some sort of streamlined ministerial review or some density bonus or some state law like that.
Which my understanding from feedback from the commission, council in the past was to try to introduce a process that encourage people to use our development standards as opposed to blowing up the process and going through a mandated requirement and saying, you can only require these things of me as your objective standards and they also exempt themselves in some instances from, from the sequel process.
But regardless of that, if we had specific uses that we required as a CUP, regardless of mixed use, like a hotel or like a driveway, that would bypass the director, that has to go to planning board and then that would appeal to us.
So, so one thing I would offer up is if the concern is on a specific use being co-mingled with the residential, then I would, my suggestion as a city planner is that maybe we look at that use and if there's an interest to make that change to the land use table, that we undertake that review, go through the process with the county, the commission and bring it to council because we also have to conduct a separate analysis of what the impact is to raise the bar on those particular uses separately from this effort.
I think what I'm hearing my colleagues say, there's, there is a concern over the mixed use that it wouldn't get to us because of the, the new structure that we're moving away from having a mixed use to ADU versus CUP. So I think what we'd like to see is for that to definitely come to us for an appeal.
Well, well, so, yes, but I think what Mr. Ramirez is alluding to is a conversation I had at this dais a few months back where if we make our housing element even just a little too arduous, they're going to go with an SB 35 project or they're going to go with AB 2011 and they'll just bypass it.
That is, that is correct.
That's the reality. We're going to take the least line of resistance.
Yeah. And we definitely don't want to make things more difficult, especially when, when it comes to the housing component of it, because that's what we need to do is to move forward with our housing component. I think we're just concerned for bigger projects like Fries and it has mixed use and it has housing elements together.
Yeah. So, you know, there's, obviously we've gone through it, there are some issues that we think generally in not just Burbank, but statewide, there are some things happening in Sacramento and, and around the region that are sort of forcing a lot of cities' hands into creating new and innovative ways to deal with the changes in the city. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving this forward. I think, I think there are some, we're going to have to see how it plays out and I know there's some community members that are going to have questions about this and I'm happy to reach out to folks and talk about how to deal with the new appeals process and how that looks and how, how it actually works and function, which we'll see.
I think that we can look at staff and find out like the different steps to ensure that the public is aware of the new process, how we educate them. I think they probably can guide them a lot closer to the new process and maybe have it available on the website, the steps that they need to take or questions, answers type of forms that we can have on the website with somebody directly that they can contact in the event that they need to file an appeal and how the process will work. That would be very helpful in ensuring that the public will be well aware of our new process. And I do agree, there's a lot of things that, a lot of changes are happening and some we're in control of and some we're not in control of. The only reason I'm really in support of, you know, one of the reasons I'm in support of this, because I feel like it's an improvement to the process, the lengthy process that we have seen developers complain and the cost of building has gone up and the complaints that come to us is like, the process takes forever and that's why I asked you the question, like, is there any way we can do it sooner than later? But this is definitely an improvement to shorten the time, to make sure that we're moving forward and fast, we're not holding our housing market just because our process is lengthy. We definitely will be watching this and I encourage members of the public that have raised their concerns to us to keep an eye on it because if the process is not working, we need to know about it. And we will come back and revisit this and see, you know, have we made changes that actually works in, in the best interest of the public or not? And I'm hoping to hear it's good news because we shortened the time and we're expediting the process. Now, as far as the planning commission, as staff indicated early, we appoint those, the, the members of the board. So I have faith in them that they're going to do the right job and if we don't, I'm sure you're going to let us know. I know, I, I see there's concerns, I see that maybe because they're not elected, but they take their job very seriously and I have a former planning commission sitting next to me or that, you know, 12 years took his job very serious. So I do count on them to make the right decisions and again, if they are not doing their jobs, you know how to get ahold of us, you know how to, you know, come here and let's have a discussion and then we're happy to ask staff to come back and take a look at, to see if it is working or not. But I think this is an improvement to expedite things in the city and hopefully the appeal process will not be cumbersome for somebody who's trying to do it and we'll see if the information they provide is, is enough and hopefully they don't need to go back and add some more information to it because they were confused to begin with. Council member Rosati?
I could just tell you, just the 12 years I've been on the planning board, it's just, it's not developers that, that this has affected, it's, it's just two people just trying to build a home for their family. And I've seen the financial and emotional damage that these constant appeals have taken and unfortunately, you know, this is coming about, you know, the state has recognized, what I recognize, you know, there has been an abuse of the system of people claiming to protect our community and, and I've seen it and many times the information is not factual and not correct. There's been a few times where, where it's been right, but I can tell you many times it hasn't. So I'm in agreement with streamlining the process. I'm, I'm in agreement of continuing to streamline our single-family home guidelines. You know, we, we still, it still takes a lot of time to get a permit to do additions and build homes in this community. So whatever we can do to streamline the process, I'm for.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Before I make a motion, I just want to say, you know, I don't want folks out there in the community who have real concerns and, and factual appeals because we, like council member Rosati said, there have been folks who have overturned decisions and city council and planning board will make those correct decisions when presented with the facts. So do not feel discouraged. There is a process, we went through it. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce an ordinance of the city council.
Council member Anthony, I'm sorry.
I did want to bring one thing up. It was mentioned that we should have a full council here and I did want to mention to members of the audience at home that we are in constant communication with our council members and if any of the council members wanted to have this kicked to another meeting, we would have done that gladly, but that was not the message that we received. We were, you know, our message was to move forward with tonight's meeting.
And to that point, I was going to ask after I made the motion, Mr. City Attorney, this is our first read, so this has to come back at the next council meeting for a final vote.
Correct.
And at that point, it, it'll be on consent, but any council member can pull the item and can amend it and can have a full, robust discussion at that point.
And it would have to come back a third time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will introduce an ordinance of the council of the city of Burbank, amending Title IX, Chapter III, Environmental Protection, and Title X, Chapter I, Zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to Implement Burbank 2021-2029 Housing Element Program Number 22 Related to the Update of Project Appeal Procedures and Making Other Related Amendments, Project Number 240001518, Zone Text Amendment and Code Text Amendment Attachment 1 and 2 Include the Updated City Attorney's Memorandum Red Strike Language.
Second.
I'm City Clerk, take a roll call.
Council member Anthony?
Yes.
Council member Mullins?
Yes.
And council member Rosati?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute bathroom break, we'll be right back. So five minutes exactly, we'll be back here.
Any bathroom?
Or phone call break? Okay, we're back in order here. Thank you. Our next item is a staff report. And I am looking here. So we have a report for council. After the staff, somebody is going to come in and do the staff presentation for the item. The IOB appointment to fill the vacancy for Infrastructure Oversight Board for an expired term. And the city clerk is going to give us the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Good evening, members of the City Council. Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight, I will be presenting item number 10. On November 27, 2024, the City Clerk's Office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2025, which was created by the removal of Member Shont Kotavertian from the board. On January 14, 2025, council considered appointing a member to fill the vacancy. The City Clerk's Office received one application. After deliberating, council directed staff to re-advertise the vacancy for an additional 30 days to obtain a wider applicant pool, as the initial application period occurred over the holiday season. On January 15, 2025, the City Clerk's Office contacted the applicant, confirmed he wanted to continue being considered for the position, and re-advertised the vacancy. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, City Council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the City Clerk's Office, press releases sent to the Burbank Leader and to myburbank.com, notices posted on the City Hall Bulletin Board, community groups and organizations, and by constant contact email notification. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office was Friday, February 14, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. The City Clerk's Office received four applications for the Infrastructure Oversight Board: Christopher Desa, Dwayne Gilmore, Abdi Saghafi, and Mike Van Gorder. The applications are listed in the order in which they were received, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any speaker cards? Yes, we do. We have one card. Oh, two cards. Thank you. And since we have two cards, each speaker will be speaking for three minutes. My first speaker is Abdi Saghafi, followed by Mike Van Gorder.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, staff. Thank you for the opportunity. I am applying to serve on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for the remainder of the term. I've lived in Burbank since 2011, last 14 years. At the time, I had an opportunity to purchase a home either in Burbank, California, in Burbank, Glendale, La Crescent, or Pasadena. I specifically chose Burbank due to the strong sense of community, strong city government, and excellent city services and schools. I went to school in Canada, Calgary, Canada, received a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and continued my studies in the U.S., receiving an MBA in Finance from Cal State L.A. and a Master's in Civil Engineering from Cal State University, Long Beach. I am a professional registered civil engineer in the state of California, have been for the last 30 years. I am a certified project management professional as well through Project Management Institute. I worked for Caltrans for 35 years before retiring in 2024. I worked in two different offices, District 8 and District 7, District 7, which covers L.A. and Ventura Counties. I was the project manager for the I-5 and Empire Project in its initial phases, and worked closely with Mr. Kriske initially before moving to Division of Traffic Operations, where I served as the office chief supervising senior and staff engineers responsible for improvement of safety and operational improvements in L.A. County as well as Ventura County. I also was involved in working with the Airport Authority for the installation of the traffic signal at I-5 Southbound off-ramp, which I believe has helped greatly the flow of traffic at that location. My goals in serving the IOB are as follows: participate in the improvement of the complete street elements of the 2035 Plan, use my education and technical background in providing input into proposals for improving cities and for infrastructure, communicate with neighboring communities to share ideas on improvements that they have successfully implemented, work closely with the City of Burbank Public Works Planning Departments, as well as Transportation Commission, to implement the complete street elements of the general plan, and be responsive to community input as well. Some of the goals are transit priority, improving safety, parking TDM elements, accessibility, and equity. Benefits are several. Focus areas are Hollywood Way, Downtown Burbank, Media District, Golden State District. And I want to thank you for your time tonight and your attention.
Thank you. Our speaker now is Mike Van Gorder. And you get three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I initially applied to be on this board because I knew I could faithfully execute what would be necessary to serve our community well. And having since then read the extraordinary resumes of the people that sent in other applications, I'd like to formally rescind and endorse Mr. Gilmore. He is really an exceptional, the resume is really outstanding. This community deserves the best, and I believe he's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, with all the years I've been as a city clerk and a city council member, it's the first time, but thank you for making recommendations to council as well. With that, Madam City Clerk, do you want to walk us through the vote?
Sure. We can do a show-of-hands vote. I will call each name, and we'll do as many rounds as we need.
If I could, just a quick deliberation. Thank you, Mr. Van Gorder, for your kind words. Mr. Desa originally applied when it was just one applicant. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Desa applied, and he was the sole applicant. And council redirected us to re-advertise, which we did.
And he didn't show up last time? He doesn't show up this time? Okay.
That is correct.
I just want to mention, Mr. Saghafi, you have a very great resume. I do notice that it is primarily focused on transportation. We do have a Transportation Commission in the city. With that being said, I would like to move forward.
Thank you. Go ahead and move forward.
Okay. I'll call each name, and we'll show it by show of hands, please. Christopher Desa? Dwayne Gilmore? Dwayne Gilmore is appointed. Congratulations.
So congratulations, Mr. Gilmore. And I'd like to thank Mr. Saghafi for coming in and being here tonight and introducing yourself. And like Councilmember Anthony said, please continue applying, and we do have openings periodically, so we'd like to see you back here again. Thank you. That's it? You've been appointed. Thank you. The second report to council tonight is a review of the City Treasurer's Investment Portfolio Report for December 31, 2024. So I'd like to welcome Mrs. Crystal Palmer, our City Treasurer, to the podium.
Good evening, Councilmember Mullins, Councilmember Anthony, and Councilmember Rosati. As well as my fellow Burbank residents, my name is Crystal Palmer, and I'm your Burbank City Treasurer. Tonight, I am here to present the Treasurer's Report for December 31, 2024. This report has been reviewed by both Oversight Committees, Internal Fiscal and Treasurer's Review Group, and External Treasurer's Oversight Review Committee. On the Fiscal and Treasurer's Review Group, we have Councilmember Anthony, Councilmember Mullins, City Manager Justin Hess, Assistant City Manager Courtney Paget, Financial Services Director Jennifer Becker, and CFO of BWP, Joe Lilio. On the Treasurer's Oversight Review Committee, we have Darren Guggenheim, CEO of Gain Federal Credit Union, New Orleans Karas, former CEO of Cedar Sinai Federal Credit Union, Richard Martin CPA, Scott Rife, retired Senior Vice President of Boston Private Bank and Trust. So going over the portfolio, we'll go over the overview, followed by an economic update, and then finally, a strategy of the overall portfolio. Market value: The city's portfolio currently stands at $673 million. This chart also highlights the annual payments we make to Calpers every year to save on our pension costs. Our investments are broken down by the following asset classes: U.S. Agencies at 26%, Joint Powers Authority Pool or CAMP at 20%, Corporate Medium-Term Notes 18%, Municipal Bonds 11%, our Money Market Fund at 9%, CDs at 8%, Super Nationals at 5%, and finally, Treasuries at 3%. This table shows how we are in compliance with both the California State Code and our own investment policy, which council approved last year. The average duration of the portfolio is 1.53 years. Our yield in December was 3.45%. While we continue to take advantage of the liquidity of short-term rates, we are also locking in longer yields, especially as spreads rise, with the continuing disinversion of the yield curve. This is a chart I took from Glendale's investment presentation to its council last year, showing the yield comparisons of surrounding cities. While the data is from June 2024, this shows how our yields are in line with our neighboring This chart shows our income summary from the coupons we receive periodically. Again, this has increased significantly from previous years, and we received $1.8 million in December. As you recall in our investment policy, while safety, liquidity, and yield remain the city's primary investment objectives, all else being equal, we aim to invest responsibly as much as possible. With this, I wanted to highlight a recent local investment we made in a bond issued by our very own Walt Disney Company here in Burbank. This past December, the City of Burbank invested $3 million in a five-year bond yielding 4.64%. What we like about this investment is that more than just the financial stability of the Disney brand, the company is an important part of our Burbank community, as we all know. Disney is the second-largest employer in Burbank with over 10,000 employees. Their mission is to entertain, inform, and inspire people around the globe through the power of unparalleled storytelling. More than what it does in making everyone, not just kids, happy all over the world with its movies and theme parks, Disney also does a lot for the Burbank community. They provide sponsorships for many Burbank-based nonprofit organizations, including Home Again L.A., Family Services Agency, the Boys and Girls Club, Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and BTAC. For over 40 years, Disney volunteers have also donated over 65,000 hours in supporting Burbank events. More recently, it also committed $15 million to L.A.-area fire relief and rebuilding efforts. Economic conditions. Looking at the labor market, while it has cooled from its peak, it is still very solid with unemployment at 4%. Average hourly earnings continue to outpace inflation, but with the labor market not as strong as it was before, people are now choosing to stay put in their jobs, with quits down 22% from 2022. It would be interesting to see how layoffs in the federal government could impact the job market. While the federal government has a huge economic footprint and employs 2.4 million civilian employees excluding postal workers, that is only 1.5% of all non-farm jobs. Workforce reductions, however, may have more of an impact on regional unemployment rates, particularly around Washington, D.C. and smaller metro areas dependent on military bases or health centers. The other issue that we should keep in mind is that may affect the job markets is the proposed deportation of unauthorized immigrants. According to estimates from the Migration Policy Institute, there are over 13 million unauthorized immigrants living in the U.S., equal to about 4% of the total population. A reduction in this labor force will certainly impact labor supply and the overall economy. I also wanted to highlight two other trends that are affecting the labor market. First is our aging population. With more Americans now 55 years old and up, we are seeing an increased demand for medical and healthcare services, driving up demand for workers in those areas. In fact, 65% of job growth in 2024 actually came from the healthcare and government sectors, likely masking the weaknesses in other industries. In the tech sector, for example, the unemployment rate is much higher at 5.7%. The other trend I wanted to highlight is the diminishing value of the college degree. From 2001 to 2021, the number of Americans with college degrees grew 80%, even as the labor force only grew 13%. The supply of college-educated workers has increased significantly, with parents encouraging their children to pursue college degrees, even at the cost of incurring significant student debt. The result of this is that because a lot of people now have college degrees, it has become harder to find white-collar jobs. At the same time, because fewer people are going into practical trades like plumbing or electrical work, there is still strong employer demand in those sectors, and as a result, jobs are paying even more than entry or mid-level white-collar work. Inflation continues to be a threat, with the latest CPI number for January coming in at 3%, higher than expected. This increase primarily reflected higher prices for used cars, as well as auto insurance, gas, and fuel. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that companies tend to reset their prices in January to reflect rising costs from the previous year. Economists say they do not expect many of these increases to continue, suggesting that the January pace may not be sustained. In general, consumer price growth tends to run high at the beginning of the year before slowing down in the second half, with this dynamic occurring in 16 of the last 22 years. The other factor impacting inflation is grocery prices, and as we know, eggs. With the avian flu outbreak and the death of more than 100 million U.S. chickens, egg prices are now above the previous record high we saw in 2023. I compiled the list of prices of eggs around Burbank, specifically one dozen large, non-organic, cage-free eggs, and I wanted to point out that even as prices are high overall, there is an opportunity for savings if you just shop around. Trader Joe's, for example, sells their cheapest eggs at $3.49. However, there is a limit of one dozen per person, and eggs usually run out by midday. If you want to buy more than just one dozen, though, without having to drag your entire family early in the morning to Trader Joe's and want the guarantee of having eggs available, one tip I have is that Whole Foods allows online ordering with no minimum for pickup. So just refresh- So just refresh their website every few hours. Order your eggs quickly when they become available. There's a maximum of three dozen per order, but there is no limit to how many orders you can place. And pick up your $5 eggs from Whole Foods at your own leisure, because they will hold it beyond a specific hour window that you specify when you place your order. With the job market continuing to remain solid and relatively flat inflation, the overall GDP exceeded forecasts in 2024, growing 2.5%. Households have remained resilient, and consumer spending continues to increase, propelling GDP growth. Looking at the housing market, active housing inventory continues to remain below pre-pandemic levels, but there is some hope, as it is now up 25% nationally from a year ago. While we know that most people are staying put to hold on to their locked-in low mortgage rates, eventually, people do get tired of waiting and just decide to move, even if rates are not as slow as they would prefer. In a recent survey, people have indicated that 5.5% is their magic number and is the highest mortgage rate they will accept in their next home purchase. With current 30-year fixed mortgage rates at almost 7%, this explains why resale turnover is still pretty low. Earlier, we talked about our aging population, and this is actually one factor that could impact our housing market in the next decade. By 2030, the U.S. population 80 years and older is expected to increase by more than 4 million people to 18.8 million. History shows that a growing number of people at this age usually conclude that they can no longer live comfortably or safely at home and seek a senior facility. More than 560,000 new senior housing units are needed to meet all the demand by 2030. But at current development rates, only 191,000 will be added by then, further impacting the overall housing supply. In the LA region, the wildfires have further diminished housing supply, and prices are expected to increase with the demand from those displays and additional fireproofing features for new homes built. Historically, though, the prices in areas surrounding the fire perimeter have increased more than those within the perimeter. Across the country, with the rise in natural disasters, homeowners' insurance premiums are also expected to increase significantly in the next 30 years, especially in areas with high wildfire and hurricane risks. We already see this in Burbank, with homeowners' insurance much higher in the hills than in the flats. Overall, asset prices remain high, with S&amp;P 500, for example, hitting record highs recently, although it did drop significantly today. The U.S. dollar also remains very strong, making international travel a great deal for Americans. With that, economists have now lowered their projections for a recession from over 60% a couple of years ago to just 22% this year. With concerns about inflation, the federal deficit, and government policies, five-year Treasury yields have continued to be volatile in the past few months. With a solid job market and the lingering uncertainty surrounding inflation, the Federal Reserve decided to hold rates steady in their meeting last month. Markets now do not anticipate any rate cuts until June at the earliest, with at most probably around two rate cuts total in 2025. Used to be one last week, now it's two. Since President Trump began hiking tariffs on China in 2018, the average effective tariff rate on Chinese imports has jumped from around 3% to roughly 11%. In contrast, the average effective tariff rate on imports from all countries only rose from about 1% to 2%. So while the Chinese have cleverly found alternative ways to sell us their lower-priced goods, which we do enjoy, additional tariffs proposed may ultimately mean that companies would have no choice but to pass on their higher prices to us. While the de minimis tariff exemption has been reinstated, if the exemption does get canceled in the future, it would certainly impact a lot of consumers who enjoy shopping from affordable sites like Shein and Timu, both of which make up 30% of the de minimis parcels entering the U.S. The other issue that investors worry about is the continuing federal deficit. As the U.S. government borrows more money and needs to offer higher rates to investors to compensate them for the higher risk, and that means higher interest costs. Other expenses, our overall expenses, also continue to outpace our revenues, and the problem is that the bulk of the spending really comes from mandatory outlays, like Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security. The good news is that despite all our problems, the U.S. is still projected to grow faster than other advanced economies, with an estimated growth of 2.7% in 2025 and 2.1% in 2026. What's notable in recent months, though, is really the increasing uncertainty. Past spikes in uncertainty have usually been associated with recessions, financial crisis, or other massive global developments like COVID. While we are not having a recession or financial crisis right now, at least not that we know of, people just don't know what is going to happen, especially with government policy. A spending freeze was declared and rescinded. Federal programs and even entire agencies have been suspended or shut down. Tariffs have been threatened, announced, canceled, postponed, and implemented. There's always something new every day, and I actually find myself refreshing the news on my phone now all the time, expecting big news. With that, as outlined in our investment policy, our mandate is always safety, liquidity, and yield, in that order. Safety of principle is our primary objective, and we continue to closely monitor our holdings while performing comprehensive due diligence on all our investments. With liquidity as our secondary objective, we also continue to maintain adequate cash flows to meet both anticipated and unexpected cash flow needs. Finally, our third principle is yield. In my presentation last year, we talked about expecting Fed rate cuts in the next few years. While the rate cuts have been slower than expected, more recently, we have repositioned funds in our portfolio, moving out of our money market funds, which now yield 4.28%, and back into LEAF, which now yields higher at 4.32% because of its longer duration. At the same time, we also continue to ladder our portfolio, investing in five-year maturities so we can lock in rates for future income. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speaker cards? I see a no.
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. My colleagues, any questions?
I mean, you and I were in the meeting last week at the Subcommittee, so Councilmember Rosati, if you have any input, we...
Thank you, we always look forward to this great report, and I always look forward to see what's the next highest price in the market. Last year was avocado, this year is eggs. I'm hoping this trend goes away soon, but I appreciate...
There goes your avocado toast.
I know, with the eggs on top of it, so...
Yeah, it's all breakfast items, too, avocado toast, eggs, what is next, like cereal?
Oh, well, I hope not.
I'm just, I'm gonna post your how-to on to get cheap eggs online, just so people know.
Well, if you go to Costco, I think there's the limit, two or three, the same thing, but no...
Actually, outside Burbank, it's Amazon Fresh, it's even cheaper in North Hollywood, $3.49. I got six dozen last week.
Crystal has all the tricks to get the egg, exactly. That along with a lot of other things. All kidding aside, thank you, great report, and we know we're in good hands, so we appreciate you coming tonight and giving us the report.
Thank you.
So this is noted and filed, we don't need to take any action, so thank you, and off you go now. Good night. I know she's looking forward to that. Okay, we have our, believe, final report for the evening. So our third report to council tonight is a review of the general fund financial status as of December 31st, 2024, and adoption of a resolution amending fiscal year 2024/25 budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. And with us tonight is Mrs. Jennifer Becker to give us the update, thank you.
Thank you and good evening, council members. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department, and I'm here tonight to present you with our mid-year financial report. We recently closed our second quarter, which is halfway through the point of our fiscal year, so this is a good time to take a look at the status of our revenues and expenses and make adjustments where needed as we head into next year's budget process with an updated look at the city's financial future. So we're gonna start with a brief economic outlook and then go on to review our mid-year results for both revenues and expenditures. Then next, we'll review our mid-year appropriation requests. We'll roll all of those items into a financial projection for our general fund year-end balance and five-year forecast. And lastly, we'll provide a brief preview of our upcoming '25-'26 budget process. So with that, let's begin. I had this lovely economic outlook slide prepared for you, but I believe Ms. Palmer covered more of the economy than we could possibly need. I just wanted to touch on one point she brought up, which I think a lot of economists are really interested in right now. You know, we have this feeling of sort of instability in our government, you know, with financial freezes and tariffs and all of these things, but the data is still showing that the economy is relatively stable. And, you know, that's a good thing. But we know that these federal government actions over time can impact consumer confidence, and we have seen consumer confidence rates dip down a little bit lower in the past couple of months. So the big lingering question is, with all this uncertainty, will it eventually affect our spending decisions, and thus the economy? Or will consumers still mostly maintain their spending levels and perhaps just fret about it a little bit more at the grocery store? So that question kind of remains to be answered, and I think we can all agree that the '25 economy is going to be an interesting ride. So with that, I'll move over to our state budget update. Here in California, Governor Newsom just revealed his '25-'26 proposed state budget, which includes $322 billion in total state funding, with $229 billion of planned general fund spending. The proposed budget also includes a $4.5 billion set aside in the Special Fund for Economic Uncertainties, SFEU, if you're looking to need another acronym in your life, which can be used for any unexpected economic event that arises, from revenue shortages to wildland firefighting. Notably, the state budget does not project a shortfall for the coming fiscal year. The governor's office claims it's a result of the multi-year effort undertaken to balance last year's budget, but really, it's largely just a result of increasing revenue projections by nearly $17 billion due to a stronger-than-anticipated economy. The state budget is also proposed to be balanced with some short-term savings and budget solutions, as well as the use of $7.1 billion from the state's budget stabilization account. We'll keep you posted on the status of the state budget as it moves throughout the approval and adoption process. Now let's turn back to Burbank with a look at our mid-year general fund revenues as of December 31st, 2024. While we are at 50% through the fiscal year, the timing of our various revenues typically lags either a month or a quarter behind. So you can see on the right-hand column of the chart, we've received 34% of our projected revenues at this point in the year. This is pretty consistent with last year at this time, where we had received 36% of our revenues. You may remember, back in November, when we brought to you our first quarter financial report, we made some significant adjustments to our projections for some of our revenue categories, for a net increase of $7.6 million. Based on our second quarter results, we are not recommending any additional revisions to our revenue forecast at this time. The good news is that we are still on track to meet our projected revenues, but there are a few categories I'd like to discuss that provide an overall feel for how we're trending as we move into our budget development process for next year. I'm gonna start, of course, with sales tax. The city experienced rapid growth in this revenue category in the years following the pandemic, largely due to inflation. We knew that party would have to come to an end at some point, and in the third quarter of 2024, Burbank actually experienced a decline in sales tax receipts from the prior year. Now, some of this decline had to do with a large one-time payment within our restaurants and hotels category that was received in 2023 and is sort of skewing the numbers for 2024. However, other categories also experienced declines that are likely more indicative of an economic trend. Auto sales nationwide are down significantly, as high prices have many folks priced out of the new car market, and elevated interest rates make borrowing more expensive. General consumer goods are also slumping, with consumers opting to spend their discretionary dollars on experiences like restaurants and travel, instead of clothing and home furnishings, like we all did during the pandemic. And lastly, business and industry sales are down 1.2%, which doesn't feel like a significant number, until we remember that in the second half of 2023, we experienced a major disruption in the entertainment industry as a result of the writers and actors' strikes. We have yet to experience the bounce-back we expected in this category, particularly in motion picture sales, which was down another 4% from the prior year. Our Measure P TUT revenues also experienced a decline of just about half a percent for that same quarter. The TUT revenue is less impacted by declines in auto sales than traditional sales tax, because TUT revenues are based on the destination of the buyer instead of the vehicle's point of sale. We should receive our fourth-quarter sales reports sometime in April, and this is the ever-important holiday quarter, and I think it will really tell us whether this downturn is more of an anomaly or indicative of a bigger economic trend. Now, property taxes remain a bright spot for our general fund revenues. As we reported to you last quarter, Burbank's assessed value increased 4.9% or $1.6 billion for 2024. This is largely attributable to new commercial development, transfers of ownership that trigger reassessments, and unsecured property. The median sales price for a single-family home during the fourth quarter of 2024 was $1.3 million, a 1.6% increase from the third quarter, and an increase of nearly 16% from the same quarter in the prior year. One thing I want to make a brief note of at this time is the potential impacts of our local wildfires to county-wide property tax revenue. We are fortunate that no homes in Burbank were lost in the fire, and thus, we will not be subject to any assessed value losses that will be experienced by LA County, LA City, Pasadena, and other impacted areas. The total assessed value loss is anticipated to be at about $28 billion for those regions. However, since this event occurred in the middle of a tax year, the initial negative supplementals caused by the cancellation of tax bills for destroyed structures or revenues not received due to the deferral of taxes by the governor's executive order will actually be apportioned to all agencies in the county based on a formula, and not just the affected agencies from the fire. Our property tax consultants at HDL, Korn &amp; Cone are working to try to quantify what the financial impact will be on all LA County agencies. The losses for Burbank will likely be one-time in nature, and we hope to have estimates by the time we come back to you to present the proposed budget. So next up, we'll take a look at our transient occupancy tax, or TOT. This is a great indicator of how Burbank's tourism industry has been performing. The chart here shows the last five years of hotel occupancy in those blue bars, with the orange line representing the average daily room rate charged by our hotels. Our average occupancy rate in 2024 was at 74%. This was down from 75% in 2023, but I should note that the New Cambria Hotel did add 150 rooms to the city's inventory in 2024. The average daily rate charged by our hotels was 187, also a slight decline from the $189 ADR from 2023. Now let's switch modes from revenues to expenses and take a look at our second quarter results. Overall, general fund expenditures are at 47.4%, which coincides with the general expectation of 50% for the halfway point of the fiscal year. The Fire Department is trending slightly above budget at 55%, which is typical for them in this point of the year. This is largely due to reimbursable strike team expenses incurred during the fire season, and if we factor in the anticipated revenue from those strike teams, the Fire Department's expenditures will be within budget. Non-departmental expenditures are also above the 50% mark, but that's due to the one-time nature of the contributions to other funds budgeted in that cost center, which all take place at the beginning of the year. We do have several mid-year budget requests for the current fiscal year before you tonight. Typically, a mid-year budget request is submitted when there are unforeseen or unanticipated expenses that exceed a department's budget authority, or when the city receives a grant or other one-time revenue that needs appropriation. For the general fund, we have approximately $2.1 million in appropriation requests, with $1.1 million offset by increased revenues or the use of restricted funds, for a net impact of just under $1 million. In total, roughly $13.5 million in requests from 11 different funds are before you tonight for review, with a net fiscal impact to the city of $9.5 million after factoring in offsetting revenues. A detailed list of all requests can be found in Attachment 5 of the report, but I will review a few of the highlights now. Within our general fund, the Parks and Recreation Department is seeking funding to cover emergency repairs related to the windstorms at DeBel Golf Course, in addition to covering some program cost overruns. CDD is asking to appropriate funding received from the permanent local housing allocation and national opioid settlements in support of those related programs. And the Fire Department is requesting funds for brush clearance for four new parcels of land that were donated to the city and accepted by the city council on October 1st. And they are also requesting funds for recruitment and background costs... And they are also requesting funds for recruitment and background costs in preparation for their upcoming Tri-City Fire Academy. Within our non-general funds, Parks and Recreation is requesting additional budget funds from our municipal infrastructure fund to cover emergency tree work and repairs they had to perform during the recent January windstorms. The Housing Authority received additional housing assistance payments and emergency housing vouchers that they would like to appropriate in order to utilize those funds. The IT Department is requesting funds to replace and upgrade the software for city computers currently running Windows 10, which is no longer being supported by Microsoft. And Burbank Water &amp; Power is requesting mid-year funds to complete a number of capital projects, including the Burbank Bridge infrastructure rebuild, protective relay network for critical infrastructure, and a training center rehabilitation and expansion. So with all that being said, let's take a look at our revised fiscal year '24-'25 year-end projected general fund balance. We did not make any adjustments to recurring revenues or expenses as part of this report, so our projected recurring balance remains at that $8.8 million as we reported to you last quarter. Factoring in our mid-year budget adjustments, our revised non-recurring balance is now just under $19.9 million. Adding those together, we are projecting a general fund spendable balance of $28.7 million at the end of this current fiscal year. So let's look at how those revised numbers play into our updated general fund five-year forecast. The chart here displays projected recurring revenue and recurring expenses for the next five years. As reported previously, the city now has a recurring budget balance of $8.8 million. However, after factoring in anticipated labor increases, as well as a forecasted decrease in sales tax for next year, we expect to see that number decrease to about a $1.8 million balance in fiscal year '25-'26. And of course, this is before any new budget items or MOU adjustments that are approved in the upcoming year. Beyond fiscal year '25-'26, you'll see that recurring balance turn into a small deficit as projected expenditure growth outpaces projected revenues. The challenge for Burbank over the next five years will be to make decisions that keep our forecasts sustainable by growing revenues, gaining efficiencies, and investing one-time funds in ways that achieve long-term recurring savings for the city. We will be back with some of those recommendations when we return in May with our budget presentations. On a cash basis, the city's position is very strong, with that available spendable balance of $28.7 million, giving the city a comfortable cushion to absorb future deficits or other unexpected events. Of course, our forecast is based on what we know today, and we are always making updates as the circumstances surrounding our assumptions continue to change. This slide looks at some of the unknowns that could push our forecast in a positive or negative direction. On the upside, despite all that's happening in the world, the economy is still going strong. Here in Burbank, our tax revenues continue to grow, thanks in large part to some exciting new development throughout the city. Tourism revenues continue their steady growth following the pandemic, with a new airport terminal under construction, which will soon welcome visitors to our city, and a couple new hotels on the horizon. And the performance of Burbank's restaurants continues to remain strong as well. We are lowering our UAL pension payments with each year we extend our pension funding plan, and due to our very strong general fund cash position, we're able to expand that plan while still fully funding our reserves with enough cash left over to insulate the city from future events. On the flip side, the retail sector is struggling, particularly in the auto industry, as consumers in California and the nation are choosing to spend their income in other ways. Locally, our entertainment industry has yet to fully bounce back from those strikes in 2023, and we don't really have a great estimated timetable for that recovery. Political instability both at home and abroad threatens the economy, and despite the election being over, it's safe to say there's a lot of unknowns in our future. And although we've escaped the worst of the fires in Burbank, we are not totally immune from the impact of local disasters. In addition to the costs incurred from the recent wind damage, we will receive our share of county supplemental property tax losses, and increases to the city's cost for insurance will almost be unavoidable in an already challenging insurance market. And lastly, CalPERS is embarking on a new experience study for 2025, where they review assumptions like salary increases, retirement rates, and mortality rates. Historically, those studies have resulted in unfunded liability increases to member agencies, so we'll keep our eye on that as well. But just as a reminder, the city council has nearly $126 million in available one-time resources to apply strategically towards making future investments that will reap general fund recurring savings. In addition to our projected general fund balance, we have our fully funded reserves totaling over $60 million. We also have our $3.9 million compensated absences reserve and our Section 115 Pension Trust with a balance of $31.7 million. Altogether, the city has amassed one-time funds totaling roughly 50% of the total general fund annual budget. And speaking of budget, our fiscal year '25-'26, it's hard to believe we're already there, a budget development process is well underway, with all budgets or departments actively updating their revenue projections and expenses for the coming year. As the five-year forecast showed us, we are currently projecting a recurring balance of $1.8 million, which represents less than 1% of the projected recurring budget, and recurring budget deficit of $1.4 million in the following year. We will be entering the year with that $28.7 million general cash balance that we can utilize towards one-time expenses and investments. And speaking of, as part of our budget, we'll be bringing back options to continue with the council's pension funding plan in order to generate future recurring savings and eliminate some of those future-year deficits. And here is a timeline of what the budget process will look like. We'll plan to distribute our proposed budget around May 1st. On May 6, we will review the budget with the city council, with a continuation of our budget presentations on May 20th, and then we'll have our public hearing and adoption of our citywide budget, which will take place on June 3rd. With that, we recommend that the city council approve the resolution amending the '24-'25 adopted budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. And I'd like to thank all the members of our budget team who are here with me tonight and assisted with the preparation of this report. Our department heads are all here to answer any questions about their mid-year requests, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm comfortable. I've seen the line items, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Councilmember Rosati, you got? I do have one question. In order to reduce our PERS liability, do you need directions from council to move forward and perhaps use some of our surplus, well, it's our reserves, to pay down our liability for PERS? Do you need that direction today, or...
We don't need that direction today, but yes, we do plan on bringing back a pension funding plan as part of the budget process, and at that time, we would need approval of the council to move forward with doing that.
Okay.
And I will say, the council has been very wise in not only prepaying your pensions, the annual pension payment, but also adding more to it and having additional payments. So you've been doing that over the last several years, which has really helped our forecast and put us in a really good financial position as we move forward, even though we do have those deficits in the out-years.
Thank you. So that is gonna be kind of my follow-up question. So if we do anticipate, you know, when you bring that back to us and we decide, if council decides that's what they want to do, would we anticipate our deficits in 20, in the years '26, '27, and going on to '28, '29? Would you see that deficit actually become more of a surplus than a deficit?
It's...
Or it...
It all depends on, one, how much we choose to invest and pay off in our pension, and also, two, how many new things we add in the '25-'26 proposed budget. So we could probably invest enough to eliminate a million-dollar deficit, but if we're adding a million or $2 million to the budget, well, then that, you know, those recurring items carry out into future years. So the answer is, it depends. We'll bring back a plan that we think is both, you know, economically feasible and, you know, wise for the city. I also do want to point out that, you know, those deficits are less than 1% of the overall budget. When we're looking out at 2027 and 2029, a lot of things can change between now and then. It's really small margin, our revenues are being updated all the time. So right now, we can say we have a deficit, but if a new revenue comes online, even one new hotel, you know, any change with the city can really change our financial position quite a bit. So there are small deficits, they, we have more than enough cash balance to cover, you know, multiple years' worth, so I feel confident, especially knowing that this council has historically made decisions to increase reserves and invest money in pensions that has helped us get out of these projected deficits over the years, and I have no doubt that we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, and I think it's also a responsibility to take a look, when you come back with the budget, that we keep those numbers in mind and not add on additional expenses to take our numbers, you know, to a place where we don't want them to be.
Spoken like a finance director.
Well, or a previous financed employee, so...
All right, I have a bet to win with Ms. Librato. So I'm gonna move, one, that we adopt a resolution of the council of the city of Burbank amending the budget of fiscal year 2024-2025 for the purpose of mid-year adjustments, and, two, adopt a resolution of the Housing Authority of the city of Burbank amending the budget of fiscal year 2024-2025 for the purpose of mid-year adjustments.
Second.
With motion by Councilmember Anthony, second by Councilmember Rosati, before we take the vote, I do want to thank Ms. Becker and her entire staff, and also all the staff that came in tonight to participate in this presentation. Thank you all for your hard work, appreciate it. Okay, Madam City Clerk? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins? Yes. And Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Thank you. I need you back to the podium. All right, so we're on to our last item here, so now we will hear council comments, including reports on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Who wants to go first?
Wednesday, April 19, I attended the Burbank Police Department Community Meeting for Acquisition and Use of Military Equipment, and then it rolled into the Police Commission meeting that night, which I attended. And then on Saturday, February 22, I took the family out to the ribbon-cutting, to the ceremony to celebrate the Hollywood Way and Clark Community Garden. That was really fun, it was great. There were a lot of people, a lot of volunteers that worked really hard to make that happen, and I give just all the credit to those people.
Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you. I had a Urban Forest Master Plan interview on the 12th. On the 15th was the Second Annual Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo. My son and I played some wheelchair basketball, that was fun. The next day was the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for two scouts, two Burbank scouts achieving eagle. Tuesday, the 18th, I represented the mayor at the grand opening for Asai Republic, the grand reopening, sorry, of Asai Republic. And that night, we went out and did the LA County Homeless Count. A lot of people showed up, we went late. I got paired with a couple folks who just showed up, a man and his daughter, who, she was on assignment, and she got to ask me a bunch of questions about the city and the homeless plan, and she was very inquisitive, so yeah, she had a blast. And this morning, I had a meeting with some folks who do neuro-inclusive cities.
Thank you. I attended a Zoom meeting with Ms. Vicki Cushionbaum in Cali Underhill regarding solar power. I know nobody wants to hear about solar, but we had a great meeting. I also had a meeting with our BWP general manager to discuss some of the upcoming rates and increases. And then I met with the city, well, I met with Councilmember Anthony for the fiscal and city treasurer report that we just heard tonight. And today, I had a couple of meetings with community members, including Mr. Gilmore that we just appointed, and another community member that had some questions, and that was it. Thank you.
Would anybody like to introduce any agenda items? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, a couple letters of support. The first one, AB 939, that's Assemblymember Schultz, the transportation funding, if it does match our council goals, I'm comfortable just moving straight to the letter. And then two other animal rights bills, AB 793, also Assemblymember Schultz, amending guidelines for vicious and dangerous dogs, and then AB 867, Councilmember Lee prohibiting the declawing of cats. If both of those are also in our, because I know we have already banned them, it's a thing, just, I'd love to get a letter of support first step, and if it's part of our council direction, then we can go straight to the letter, but if not, then if we want to bring it back.
So if it's part of our legislative platform, we could go ahead and do a support letter or oppose letter, whatever. If it's not, then I would suggest we bring it back as a first step to see whether or not the council supports.
All right, great. AB 793, AB 867. Thanks, that's all.
Okay. Councilmember Rosati?
Nothing.
And I don't have anything, so with that, we now adjourn the meeting. Look at that, 9:30. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, March 11, 2025, for a regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM in the council chamber at 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you all, and have a great night. And I will do this for you.